All right. Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Planning Board and valued community representatives, I welcome you all to this evening's Assembly of the Sauk planning board. As Chair, it is my privilege to convene this gathering dedicated to the thoughtful planning and development of our community. Today, we come together with a shared commitment to shaping the future of our city in a manner that reflects our values, respects our heritage, and fulfills the needs of our residents both now and in the future. Our agenda tonight contains important matters, each requiring our careful consideration, expertise, and collaboration. As we engage in our deliberations, let us remember the profound impact these decisions will have on the lives of all, keeping in mind we're residents like you. It is our duty to maintain transparency, fairness, and inclusivity in our proceedings, ensuring that the voices of all are heard and respected. Together, we must embrace the responsibility entrusted to us by our community, working diligently and thoughtfully to chart a chorus that phosphoresks growth, prosperity, and harmony. With that, I would like to call this meeting of the Tuesday, September 2, 2025 Sauk Planning Board to order. I look forward to the productive discussions and meaningful outcomes that lie ahead. Thank you. With us this evening, myself, Matt Provençal, the Chair of the Board. To my left, we have Joyce Leary-Clark, our Vice Chair, and Planning Board members Jeff Broschu, Camille White, Catherine Palini, and to my right, Carrie Lynn Lane and Jim Moyer. And with us this evening, we have our planning staff. We have our Assistant City Planner Shannon Chisholm, our Assistant City Planner Lauren Forte, thank you, I'll get it, and Lisa Harmon, our Compliance Manager, our Planning Compliance Manager. I have to write this down, this is a lot to remember. And our City Council Liaison from Ward Five Hill Hatch, thank you. This one's easy because I can read it. And with that, we will move to our first item, which is our approval or review, excuse me, of our August 2, 2025 meeting minutes. Do Board members have any questions, comments, or concerns on those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes from the August 12, 2025 Board Meeting as presented.
I will second.
All right, thank you for the motion, Joyce, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion on those minutes? All right. With that, those in favor of accepting as drafted, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Abstain.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. All right, our next item on our agenda this evening is our public hearing guidelines. This is a document that the Board has worked with staff to put together, and it provides information and outlines the process of our public hearing and public comment period. If anyone has any questions or concerns over, like a hard copy, there's a hard copy at the back of the auditorium, and we have digital versions as well, if anyone would like one. Continuing along, our next item is our public comment period. This is an opportunity for any members of the, any residents or any members of the public to come before the Board and ask questions or speak about general planning items. This is an opportunity, we usually take 15 minutes or so, to go through this as necessary, and we will collect comments, and we will address those as appropriate at the conclusion. So that being said, if anyone would like to come to the Board, to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll be happy to hear any questions or comments.
Hello, everyone, I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. It's good to be back after an extended vacation and be before you. I do not recognize Catherine Powerlini. Welcome to the Planning Board. And since staff, since I did not know of her when I sent out the two emails, I'm hoping that you did forward them to her. Thank you very much. I'm addressing the SOP update tonight. First of all, I commend the staff, Planner Prescott, what you have done, your staff members, the Planning Board members and the Chair, as far as having an evolving, transparent SOP, I want to thank you very much. And having it on the agenda tonight, and also on the agenda where you added, where you could find other general correspondence that went to this, absolutely phenomenal. Thank you very much. The Planning Board members, I thank you for your consideration of the staff reports language in this SOP regarding substantial evidence and from what source. Also, the late submission by the applicant, and including the language of certificate of completion training attestations in your deliberations. Please address and include applicant's protocol procedures and access to the Planning Board in your deliberations. It needs to be fair and equitable by all parties, especially since we know that our code of ethics and training of applicants and of others of public are equal parts. Presently, the staff and the public are consistently respecting the Planning Board and complying with the SOP's hearing procedure. The Planning Board is in compliance with their SOP procedures. However, for a consistent, fair, and equitable treatment from all parties, please, again, I'm repeating twice, have some rules and protocol decorum and demeanor for applicants accessing this podium. You deserve that respect. The current SOP states the applicants make their presentation after the staff summary and before the opening of the public hearing. They should await any questions from the Chair or Planning Board members' question addressed through the Chair before accessing the podium. Interruptions should not be allowed. The procedure should mimic council protocol. Applicants should have their own rules and procedures. Again, I'm repeating it a third time because I have been advocating for this for, I would say, three years. And you did receive in an email how I addressed it a year ago also. So it is very important for the trust of this Planning Board to have a fair and equitable to all parties to this podium. Thank you very much. Oh, one last thing, sorry. I said, finally, I await any updates concerning the contract zones from the Planning Board or Planning Staff. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road in Ward One. I'm also commenting on the SOP. I believe you probably saw in the packet the letter that I had submitted on August 27. And in my letter, I highlighted a couple concerns, and today at the podium, I'm just going back and highlighting them very, very quickly. I echo Ms. Archer's very positive commendations of the Planning Board, of the staff, and all of the advancements we've made in our SOP. Tremendous progress, I want to thank you very much for that. As I highlighted in my letter to you, I want to make sure that during public hearings, particularly for non-residents, because they can't give their address, they certainly should give their affiliation. Who are they representing, or what organization are they representing? And I can certainly see how this might fall through the cracks sometimes in a normal meeting progress, but I would ask that that is done. The bulk of my letter, of course, was concerned with the public hearing guidelines and the outline, and you know them as well as I do, so I don't need to go through the eight steps of those hearings. But they are discrete steps. And obviously, the applicant's presentation is a very discrete step. And when that application, sorry, when the applicant's presentation comes to a conclusion, then it should be the norm and the culture that the applicant should, like anyone else, then be seated again. No member of the public would ever, ever approach this podium, I believe, unless there was a public hearing that was formally opened by the Chair. And likewise, I believe the podium should also be only approached by applicants when there is the invitation of the Chair and that formal approval. We want to model the culture that we aspire to, and these procedures are extremely important. Everyone who comes to the meeting, and Mr. Chair, you've done a great job, of course, with your preamble at every meeting. Everyone knows how these meetings are conducted, and they know when and why they should come to the podium. So I just wanted to highlight that again and stress how important that is, and I thank you for your attention to this and for continued improvements in how our meetings are conducted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. We will, with that, we will continue with our agenda this evening, and we will move to our applications for review and public hearings this evening. Our first item is 321 Lincoln Street, Bradley Estates. This is for 94-unit, single-family residential subdivision, and this is presented by Big Ledge LLC and Goral Palmer. And this evening, we have before us an application of completeness review, again, for preliminary subdivision site plan, and this also includes a SLOTA delegated review authority. This is in the medium-density residential zoning district. And with that, Board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item before we begin? And with that, let me pull up my document here. Shannon, anything to add on this item?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So one of the first things that I would like to address about this application is there was an upload error. The WRRD capacity letter was uploaded under 56 SMUDi by accident, so I'm just pulling up the agenda to show you where that document actually ended up. It is right here. And so I just wanted to show that we did have this, it was uploaded, it was unfortunately uploaded in the long, in the wrong location, so I just wanted to make the Planning Board aware of it. The other thing that I would like to make the Planning Board aware of is that the applicant did provide additional information prior to the Thursday deadline. So underneath the Planning Board memo section, you would have seen two different checklists. The first one would have been for the first round of information that was provided, and then the second one that was dated with Friday's date would have been the updated one based on the new materials provided. I did the updated checklist and provided little notes to just let you know, you know, if the information addressed all of those items, or if there were some that were still outstanding. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you, Shannon. And this is map 52, Lot 19, is that correct?
That is correct.
I see that on one note, but not in the, not in our agenda, so I just wanted to quadruple check. Okay. That was good, I did catch that. I thought that was expensive for 56 SMUDi, so I went back and saw that, thank you. Board members, any questions for Shannon at this moment? All right, and with that, we have the applicant with us this evening. If you'd like to give us your presentation and let us know anything pertinent to our application of completeness review this evening.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Board. I am going to try to get my screen to share here. I have a quick, brief presentation for the Board. I thought it'd be appropriate to share what we've been working on, as this is our first There we go. So, good evening, my name is Drew Gagnon, I'm with Goral Palmer, representing Big Ledge LLC. I'll get right into it here, so we're discussing 321 Lincoln Street this evening. So this parcel is around 52 acres between Bradley Street, which is on the right-hand side of the screen here, and Lincoln Street on the left-hand side. This is an existing conditions plan showing basically what is existing as of this evening. There's approximately 13 acres of wetlands on this site, and then there's a few streams that go through the site on the right-hand side, a small one on this side as well, if you can see my hand, and then another one on the southern end of the site, and there's appropriate setbacks shown for that. Down here is also a wetland, which is known as Sauk Quarry, I believe, is one of the, with some ledge-out crop in that area. As far as our proposed plan, it's a, as Shannon mentioned, it's a 94-lot residential subdivision. These will be deed restricted for single-family only with no ADUs. That was one of the comments we've had to date. In addition, there's about, just over a mile of public roadway proposed, about 6,400 feet, as well as 400 feet of private roadway, which is this road right down here in the middle of the site. So you can see, we've got some road names shown on all these, and they cut through the site and connect Bradley Street to Lincoln Street, and we've got appropriate traffic calming measures as well, stop signs, and the roadway design is in accordance with the Sauk Technical Manual for Public Road Acceptance after completion of the streets. Sidewalks are proposed along all the public streets and the private road throughout the entire site. In addition to that, sidewalk is proposed along Bradley Street from the project entrance down to Tasker Street. That's an off-site sidewalk that's proposed on the Greek Orthodox Church frontage, and then the other residences along there. In addition to that, we're going to upgrade the pedestrian crossing at Tasker Street, and as well as upgrading it at the new proposed roadway along Lincoln Street down the south end of the project. The upgrades include a flashing beacon that are actuated when pedestrians hit the button, it'll flash, and then it provides a safer crossing. There's sidewalks existing along Lincoln Street all the way down, and then there's sidewalks existing along Bradley Street on the opposite side, so we're essentially just adding to that pedestrian network. As far as infrastructure goes on this site, a 10-inch water main trunk line is proposed between Bradley and Lincoln Street, and then four-inch public water mains also proposed along all the sec, I'll call it the secondary streets throughout. That is going to serve each residential house from a fire and a domestic standpoint. Gravity sewers proposed to Lincoln Street, but the majority of the flow, I think, like 88 of the house lots are tributary to Lincoln Street, and six of them are tributary to Bradley Street. This is really just based on elevation, the reasoning for that. A majority of it, so I think about 50 of the residential units are tributary to a new public pump station that's located down here. I think it's Lot 60A or something like that, where it's down here on the bottom of the page, would be the eastern portion of the site. The pump station is designed to public standards and is requested to be accepted by Sauk, the City of Sauk and the Wastewater Recovery District upon completion. So this will all be public infrastructure, as well as underground electrical and communication mains are proposed throughout the development. Drainage and stormwater, two gravel wetland facilities are proposed. One is located on the western portion of the site, so Plant North, and then the southern portion of the site right down here. Those are the two larger facilities that are gravel wetlands. Eight additional soil filters are proposed. These are called grass-underdrained soil filters, or just filtration, essentially taking the rest of the house lots and the roadways. In addition to that, drip-edge roofline treatment is proposed for each residence, so each house has an allocated amount of drip edges that basically go around the outside of the houses. They tie generally right into a foundation drain. They're considered low-impact development, LID, and this type of residential typology allows us to use these. What they do is they downsize other stormwater infrastructure, so they're a great tool being pushed by towns, municipalities, and the state at the moment, so we're happy we're able to use those. The stormwater is all designed to main DEP standards as well as City of Sauk standards, so that includes two 10, 25, and 50-year storm events. A stream crossing is proposed along what's called Chickadee Way, it's right up here on the northern portion of the site. This is the only access point from an upland perspective to connect the roadway through the site, and a large box culvert is proposed there to cross the stream. You can kind of see the stream essentially kind of starts right where the stream crossing is located. A mean, from a traffic perspective, main DOT permit is not required, and we provided a letter of concurrence from the main DOT in our application package showing this and showing the concurrence. Estimated trip generation in the AM peak hours around 74 trip ends, and the PM peak hour, 98 trip ends, and the Saturday peak hour generator is 91 trip ends. Permits that are required for this development include main DEP site law, site location of development act. That is going to be delegated review by the City of Sauk under municipal capacity, so that's what the Board will be voting on in the future, as well as, that's under the site plan ordinance for City of Sauk. And our PA Tier Three permit for the wetland fills of just over 52,000 square feet of wetland fills. The applicant's coordinating this with the Army Corps and the main DEP. The application was submitted in July, we've already had correspondences with both agencies. And then, of course, subdivision and site plan permits are required for the City of Sauk. It's just a traditional subdivision. The site plan piece is due to the clearing acres, over two acres, as well as the site location piece. Anytime the city has to review from a site location, Development Act standard, site plan gets brought in based on the standards, have to match up with the state standards. So not your traditional site plan, but it's being reviewed under that. That's all I have this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the Board has. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant at this time?
I'm primarily concerned with the checklist, to see whether or not application completeness is satisfied, Drew. So the only issue that I could see not answered completely in the, sort of the second checklist, was the reference to the main IF&amp;W 100-foot buffers along streams. I know in some of the material, I, there was quite a bit of material there, you know, probably about 700 pages or more, and I saw some references to it, but I was hoping you could help us understand whether or not that is going to be a problem with the 100-foot buffers from the streams.
Certainly, so first and foremost, obviously, coordination with Mainland Fisheries and other agencies are ongoing. So what we did for this project was we utilized the previous coordination efforts we had on this project from a few years ago. When we reach out to these agencies, typically it's done from a land piece, so we say, hey, we're doing a project on this piece of land, do you have any information for us from a, whether it's a wildlife or plant species, and then they give us information back. So that was done previously within the last five years, which is the general rule of thumb. So we provided those as part of our application package. The city requested that we obtain new ones, basically updated correspondence for this project, so we were able to do that and get a few of the agencies to respond back, and Mainland Fisheries is just the one that, since that request has come in, they just haven't responded and updated. Again, we do have a memo from them on this piece of land from the previous project that essentially discusses the setbacks and everything, and all the different environmental factors on this site. So I do want to note that there is one, they've requested an updated one, which we've done, and we're just awaiting responses on it. At the end of the day, we'll respect all, if anything changes in those memos, we're certainly happy to revisit and look at it, but we felt like we've done a good job of providing the buffers to the satisfaction that they'll agree with our concurrence on that.
So you're working with them, with main IF&amp;W, and are at least one or more of the locations on the site would be, would encroach on that 100-foot buffer, and you're looking to get consent from them to do that? Or are you satisfied that everything you're doing is going to be beyond 100 feet from any of the streams that need protection?
So there's a few different streams on there. There's some encroachments for the stream crossing, which you need to cross the stream, so that's kind of set in stone. There's one location where we do have 75 feet from the stream, and we're providing the additional 25 feet on the other side of the stream in terms of replacement, if you want to call it that. Again, that was consistent with the original letter that they sent us, that they agreed to. It, and again, the correspondence, I was back and forth with that, but we're providing it again, and if something's changed since then, we'll work with them on making sure that that's changed.
I do remember that other letter in the packet, now that you mentioned it.
Apologize with the information, I know there's a lot in there, so.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from Board members? Jeff?
So I guess, Drew, thank you. As always, you have a very, very detailed and lengthy packet. I just wanted to touch base, and you've referenced this, right? So this parcel's been before us before, there's a lot of historical data, and you were able to capitalize on some of that. One of the things I noticed is that you did on some of the site plans have some rare tree species, I believe there was a tree inventory, trees of significant importance that were done on a previous review, and during that, there were, I think, two or three groves of American chestnuts. You had them noted on your site plan, but I don't really see anything, are those being preserved as part of this? Because there wasn't obviously a tree inventory provided, that's usually something the Board determines. I didn't know if you had taken that into consideration, where they're already identified, they know where they are, were there provisions in this plan to preserve those existing stands of trees?
Some of them, yes. So not all of them, the chestnuts that you're referring to, some of them are in the development footprint, but there are some that are outside of it in the open space and footprint, but there are some that are outside of it in the open space and will be preserved. So a combination.
I think that's all I have for the applicant at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any other thoughts from the, from board members for the applicant?
So I had a few, Drew. You mentioned, did you mention that these were going to be single-family only with no ADUs? Is that what you said, deed restricted?
Correct, and the reason being is the traffic permit, we're very close to tripping in, and a concern from city staff was if someone were to purchase a lot and then add an ADU, that, you know, if, say, every lot did that, you essentially doubled the amount of families that would be in here, and that would essentially, there's no protections to limit and like have to go back and get a TNP, a traffic movement permit at that point. So it was discussed with the applicant and the city was, well, we can deed restrict it, and the lots are relatively small on the smaller side in terms of what the minimum is allowed in the zone. So it'd be difficult to kind of put another ADU in there or AAdu in there. So that was what was discussed, was limiting it to a single-family only.
Okay. And so that you've had that discussion with staff, and staff feels that that meets all of the, it's not going to be any conflict with any of the state statutes that they've been messing around with?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer that?
If you have any additional insight, yes, please.
Yes. So from my understanding of LD 2003, deed restrictions such as those being proposed are still allowed under that law.
Thank you, Shannon. And Drew, the flashing beacons, can you, can you show us on your, on your plan again where those flashing beacons would be?
Sure. If you can see my hand, one down right at the entrance on Lincoln Street, right where the project is entering.
Okay.
And that would be obviously crossing the road, so it would connect the sidewalks on-site to the sidewalk off-site on Lincoln, which is on that south end of Lincoln Street.
Sure.
The other one is up by Tasker, which is, I believe, right up here, if I can tell if they're real, the Tasker-Bradley intersection.
Okay.
So we're providing, again, sidewalks all along within the project, sidewalk along Bradley Street, and then there's, and then, and then a crosswalk here with the flashing beacons at the intersections. Generally, better to have it at an intersection if you can, so that's the purpose for that.
Okay, yeah. At Tasker-Bradley, not Tasker-Garfield, but
Correct.
Further south, okay. You enter the American chestnut question that I was going to have that Jeff mentioned. You were able to get a landscape plan. As far as the, I saw your limit, your cut limits here, and not the site plan it yet, but is there, is there anything in here that restricts any of the development on the sites, the removal? Because now we're, we're single-family lots here, and it could all get clear-cut essentially. So is there anything, is there any provision in there to, to limit any of that?
Not currently, but that is something that I think that would be willing to add again in terms of whether it's deed restricted. There's a developed area that's required as part of these plans, right? So if someone were to try to go in there and increase their developed area on a single-family lot, theoretically codes would be involved at some point, would be able to limit that. So there are thresholds in place in terms of total developed area that each lot is allowed. It's not just a blanket, whatever the lot size is. So if that answers your question, there is something in there regarding that.
It does a little bit. And then there was, there was some verbiage in there in your application here about the phasing component, but I, I didn't really grasp the actual area of phasing. I think he had some, there was some description in there, I think, and some roads, but can you talk about that for a moment, how the phasing would work?
Sure. And it's simply to start the project and get some COs and building permits on initially and then help roll that over to continue the project, so.
Of course.
I apologize, I don't have a phasing plan up with me right on this presentation, but if you can imagine a little bit, essentially this first cluster of Blue Jay Lane, which is, you know, this road basically from here to here, along with Hawk Lane, and then a few, a little bit of a stub of, I think that's Chickadee actually, oh, Goldfinch right down here. Another phase would connect the two in and then include the pump station. So there's a, there's a portion that, and some of it sewer-related, there's a portion that we can get around 25 to 30 homes on gravity sewer without needing the pump station. When we creep a little bit further into the lot, it requires the pump station to be active, so that's set in the second phase when those homes are needed to serve it from a sewer perspective. And then the additional phases are essentially just filling in the gaps and staging the road a little bit along the, from Lincoln to Bradley. So the phasing is set up to show the intent, but it could happen concurrently too. A lot of it's market conditions-driven, obviously, so I did, next public hearing, I'll certainly bring a phasing plan and discuss it more. I know we provided in the application package, which was a lot of material, but I can certainly have that ready.
Okay, great. And then the pump station is sending it to Lincoln?
Correct.
And then my final question was the, there was a note in there about the draft HOA and that, I guess, and this is for Shannon too, perhaps, is that, would that be a waiver request? Because that's, I understand that as part of the preliminary, and there's, there's a lot happening with a lot of streets. So is that, is the intent there for, to work on that or for final, or what's the thought there for?
So the initial setup is that there is no HOA because as everything's public, the open space is dedicated to be, is proposed to be dedicated to the city, the stormwater facility is the road, and then each homeowner will own their own lot. So the idea was to eliminate the need of an HOA. This is all city infrastructure. If the city decides not to accept the open space or accept the roadways or something like that, then an HOA would be set up. So what we would do, and this is what Jason and Big Ledge have done on all their projects, is we'll kind of create one so that there's one that can be referenced on deeds if roads aren't ever accepted by the city, so that it can protect, so there's protections in place. But the intent is that it's all city infrastructure. There is a small Sparrow Lane, 200, 350-foot roadway that would be private, and that would have a road maintenance agreement associated with it upon further review. So, but there's not a traditional HOA proposed at this time unless the city wasn't going to accept open space or other facilities.
Okay. I understand more clearly now.
All right, that's all I had. Any other thoughts from board members?
Mr. Chair, I think the phasing, I can't seem to pull it up right tonight, but I think it was on page 332 in volume two. I think that's, so you did include phasing earlier. That's, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you. I made one document of 1,200 pages, so I'm, that's why I'm having a little bit of a tricky time finding.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff.
I agree with Jim. I saw the phasing map, but I didn't see a narrative of the phasing timeline. And in the neighborhood meeting notes, it kind of sounded like that early conversation you were having with the neighbors is that that could be like a five-year build-out, maybe, maybe a year per phase build-out. Is that still accurate within your?
Yes.
Any other thoughts, questions, concerns from board members? Ah, there we go.
Apologize, would you like me to run through this real quick?
Nope. This is perfect. This was the, that was the document I thought I saw that I couldn't find again, so thank All right, so as a reminder this evening, we, this is a application completeness review, and Shannon, it looks like we have space on the October 7th agenda if the board finds the application complete. Is that still an accurate date?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, if we could, could we maybe pull this back to, you know, some board discussion? I have a few items I'd like to discuss, and then
Sure.
we can kind of go over and see if they are concerns for completeness, and then if we have questions, you could ask the applicant for clarity.
Yeah, if the board would like, absolutely.
Want to start?
Thanks. So I just had some questions, and we touched on some of them as we were going through the phasing sequences, and as we can all see, they're, the intent is to come in from Lincoln Street and work their way in phase A, B, C, and D through the five phases. So that could mean that there's no infrastructure or connectivity on the Bradley Street side until the very end. We had concerns previously because of the sheer volume and emergency response. Looks like it may not be quite the same on this one. But my bigger question was, is the traffic movement permit, right? And the traffic movement permit, sounded like I read pretty clearly, the 98 trips was divided over the two entrances. So if we're phasing and we have three or four phases built, but we don't have connectivity to Bradley Street, does that trigger our counts on Lincoln Street to be in excess of the required count? And that could be a three, three years into the project. And I was trying to find, I know I read the review because I thought it was great that the DOT had their reply from the local engineer, and I can't pull it up because the packet's so big right now. But was that very clearly stated in the state's response saying, yes, we're okay, there's no traffic moving permit needed? But did they understand clearly that for the first several years, all the access would be on Lincoln Street? And is that fair for Lincoln Street residents to bear that burden? So that's just kind of a thought, right? We know there might not be one for the net project. Do we need to look at having connectivity through before phase B can start so that there's equality there? Obviously, that can create some hardships in their sequence of developing, but is that I had, the next thing was, we oftentimes go back and forth on financial capacity and financial guarantee. Obviously, we're in the early stages, and there was a very clear letter that the applicant himself had sufficient funds for this project. But when we read our statute, our zoning, it's also supposed to have inflated costs over time, and I didn't see on the worksheet an inflated cost for a five-year build-out. So is that the accurate financial guarantee amount? I may have missed it, but I didn't see that on the, on the line total as far as, there's got to be some calculation there that's taking place. Like Drew pointed out, if they're building Zone 1 or Phase 1, because that can be mostly gravity and supported, there's going to be more money that will be needed at Phase 2 or 3 when they put in pump station and whatnot. I had, you know, it did seem like they went around the vernal pools. I had questions on the American chestnuts, which we kind of covered. The open space, you know, does that meet our requirements in chapter 188, 504 for being open space that's usable for recreation, or is it just open space that is essentially the existing vernal pools and wetlands? What are our feelings on that? Obviously, they've mapped it out, probably not an issue for completeness. And then obviously, I have more details that wouldn't be for this, like the private street pickup for waste products, how is that going to work? A lighting, a lighting plan. I didn't see a lighting plan. That would be part of completeness. So those were kind of my questions for big items for completeness. You know, is the financial guarantee to our satisfaction for the inflation that could take place over a phased build-out? Is the traffic moving permit ruling sufficient, knowing that they have to use Lincoln Street for the majority of the time? Maybe we can just talk about those. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff.
Board members, any thoughts, questions, or concerns on some of the items here that Jeff mentioned? Joyce?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chair, one, the traffic, I do know in the notes that there's a traffic peer review ongoing by VHB. I, I would assume that's going to be part of the traffic peer review if, if, maybe it should be pointed out to them that this is a phased product, project, just because it was a large packet, and we want to make sure they're not missing anything. And that, that may, that may also be true as far as some of the other aspects. The, I just totally lost my train of thought here. Oh, open space. Is that something, I don't know at what point the city gets involved with determining whether this is open space that is acceptable to the city. I understand you're proposing to convey it to the city, but the city has to be willing to accept it. So there certainly would need to be some discussion here. I guess I'm focusing on the fact that information has been presented. It may not be perfect, but the checklist is satisfied.
All right, thank you, Joyce. Jim?
With regard to the open space, I noticed on the checklist that there's, that Parks and Recs are supposed to review the identified open space, and so will, if for some reason they're dissatisfied with the way it's presented, I'm sure you'll comment on that. With respect to the financial capacity, and it was a big packet, but I, I seem to remember trying to add up in my head the cost for the different parts of the proposal, and I think it was a little over $3 million, maybe 3.1 million, and the financial capacity, I think, was, was seven and a half. So I don't know how much inflation will go up over time or cost, but, you know, certainly the applicant could help us understand if that sort of double, the financial capacity would not be enough over time.
Any other thoughts from board members?
So I, I had a few, well, all of the items that you mentioned, Jeff, and that we've sort of started talking about here, I, I have on my list as well to sort of site plan The financial capacity, and I'd like to hear more from the applicant here, but we have those, those documents and they're, and they're listed out. So I felt that it was there. We had the letter from the financial institution, we had those documents. So if, if they need to be adjusted or made more clear, I thought we could get that as part of the review process. Open space as well, I had the same thoughts that you did, and then noticed that Parks and Rec were reviewing it. The same traffic concerns, you know, we've talked about traffic for quite some time on the parcel, so getting input from the peer reviewer, I think, would be good. You mentioned vernal pools, we've got that in there, the chestnut trees. Be nice to, once we start, you know, site planning and understanding what and more and the age of those. I think there were some saplings too out on the site that we had some concern about and transplanting those and pros and cons to that. So I had, I had thought a lot of those items that you mentioned were definitely on my list, but something we could tackle during our review process. But I guess, I guess maybe while we have the applicant here, if we could maybe hit upon the financial upon the financial component of it, and sort of those worksheets that you've provided, we can start there.
Sure. So on the financial capacity piece, the city requires us to add up all the required improvements, which are spelled out pretty clearly, and then add 150% to that. So there's a 50% built into each phase, which then gets you to the, that $7 million number that you, that you referenced in there. So that 50%, my understanding, is, is the safety net for the city, as well as accounts for inflation, things. Because again, it could be, on a phased project, it could be up to five years, but the required improvements, financial guarantee, could be for longer, right? If someone walked away, say. So that's, my understanding is that, that 50% is essentially what Jeff brought up there. So I can touch on the two other things if you'd like me to, Chair, or I can hold off on that, so.
Yeah, if you could, yeah. Any additional information you can provide would be great.
Yeah, so the other thing I heard was the lighting plan, which we did provide one in the supplemental submission that Shannon referenced, that was provided. Apologize if more information was submitted, but it was, it was after our initial package, and that should be in there, showing where the light poles are located on a clear, on a clear plan. So we do have that in there. The other item on traffic, and I appreciate, I understand some of this may be future site planning, but I appreciate the comment. In terms of a DOT permit, it doesn't matter how many entrances you have, for it, it's just a raw trip generation. So they just look at uses, and what's your trip, and we don't trigger that, regardless of how many entrances we have. So it's not a DOT thing for, they need to review if there's only one entrance, that doesn't matter. What that would matter, and I think it's a good comment, is, say, six of the phases were built, and yes, maybe they were going to Lincoln initially, you could look at that in terms of a left-turn lane, in or out of the site, is that required? Because more than 40% of the projected traffic's going there. So I appreciate the comment, and I think that, I just wanted to clarify that it, it's, that wouldn't influence the DOT's determination on if you need a traffic movement permit or not.
Okay, thank you, that helps clarify. So, speaking of the traffic in the phasing, now, while we don't need it for our application, but thinking, you know, big picture here, as far as the phasing, has a construction entrance been thought about or discussed, or anything like that? Is there, you know, how we, so we're going to be working from Lincoln Street into the site towards Bradley, and then sort of backing out? So a lot of the completion are going to have construction traffic as well? Is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, so Jason Labardi, developer. So yeah, so we've gone back and forth with how, why we'd want to phase it this way, et cetera, et cetera. At some point, I'm thinking we're probably going to do a construction entrance on Route 5, and the reasoning for it, and there's all kinds of different ways, there's always pros and cons to everything, but personally, I would like to build some sort of gravel road for, basically for dump trucks and excavation equipment, stuff like that, to run back and forth on, keep the residents on Lincoln Street while we're doing the construction off of Route 5. So with the projects I've done in the past, you know, you got dump trucks running up and down a subdivision road with five-year-old kids on their little bicycles, trying to chase them and stuff like that. So I think this would be kind of nice, where we've got two entrances, where as we're building out the residential side, we can keep it safe for the residents, where they got their entrance, and we have the construction side and kind of build it backwards. So we're not having to crisscross the residents with all the construction vehicles, if that makes sense. And that was kind of the reasoning behind it. I mean, you make a good point, Jeff, I never really thought about, all the traffic's going to get pushed to Lincoln Street, but the construction traffic would be coming off Route 5. So even though Route 5 is the last phase, we're probably going to build a gravel road and probably get the construction vehicles, probably in Phase 1 or 2. So it was kind of my thinking, to kind of keep it safer.
Okay, thank you. That was, starting to site plan, trying to avoid that, but that's, that's a big, it's a big picture piece, thank you.
And I'm definitely open for ideas. I mean, that was kind of the way I was kind of thinking on a construction-wise and safety-wise. But if you guys really digging down and saying, hey, we'd really like to open up Route 5 sooner, we, you know, we could probably, you know, switch a couple of the phases around and say, you know, maybe that loop all the way to the right side, we don't do that to the end, and then we do the Route 5 one prior. Again, we'll be driving past all those residents' houses while we're building that last phase out, which is what I was just trying to avoid, but I can see your point as well, so I guess, which is the better route?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a great topic for discussion-
Absolutely.
-when we get into it. And like you said, pros and cons to, to both scenarios, of course.
Absolutely.
I lost my train of thought. Is, in far as the financial guarantee, I guess, on, on maybe a little bit similar projects, I think we've talked about and started to look at the projects where we have, we have the preliminary, we have the financial guarantee presented like this, and then when the project's phased, depending on how it's phased, once we review it, if the project makes it to the final subdivision, is how these financial guarantees, and I think we've even stipulated it, where they need to be updated with each phase as we, as we progress. So that, that could be something that we could look at as well, as we move along with the review, so.
Yeah, I mean, currently, the financial guarantee is basically based on the whole entire project as if it wasn't phased. So right now, we have a financial guarantee on the whole entire thing. Of course, not knowing what the economy's going to do or anything like that, it might go a little bit slower, so that's why we broke it down into five phases. So then we're not having to put up, you know, $7, $8 million that's just tied up for years on end that we just can't utilize. So if we phase it, and it's a $2 million phase, you know, then we basically come up with the $2 million. That money gets tied up until all the infrastructure's done, as it gets done, parts of it gets released, but it gets tied up from day one. So as soon as I sit there and say, hey, we want to cut a tree in the Zone 1, they're going to require all that money upfront for that phase right upfront, so.
Yeah.
So it ties up all that money, and, you know, it takes six months to a year to get the road built, and the money's tied up for six months to a year, regardless, regardless how much is being used out of it.
Sure.
So it's a lot of money to put upfront.
All right, any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
So, I mean, obviously, they have a very detailed packet, and I think the board's pretty much in agreement that if we could just have staff ask about the peer review for the traffic, if there are any issues with the phasing concept, just so it's on the radar. And then maybe the second piece is if we can have staff just kind of confirm that the 150%, as Drew had pointed out, is traditionally acceptable for a phased project. I would then say that we, the applicant has submitted all the criteria for our box for application review tonight, and I'd be pretty good moving forward.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm sure we can do that, and I'm sure we can ask staff to have that information prepared for the October 7th, I think, is the proposed public hearing for this, if we move forward, so.
Well, Mr. Chair, with that, I'll move that we find the application complete for both preliminary subdivision and site plan.
All right, thank you for the motion, Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Joyce, thank you. Any additional discussion to find the application for 321 Lincoln Street, map 52, Lot 19, complete? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we schedule a public hearing in this matter for October 7th.
Thank you for the motion, Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Joyce, thank you. Any additional discussion to schedule a public hearing for this item on October 7th, 2025? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion passes 7-0. Did that capture everything, Shannon? Yes. Joyce?
Mr. Chair, we did have a question about whether we wanted to have a site walk, before we move on to the next.
Sure, would the board like a site walk? I think it would be a good idea, especially we have a few new members here, so.
And a completely different project?
Absolutely, a different, yep, most importantly, a different project. That would be great. Is that something we can schedule, Shannon?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to have Lisa look up at some dates where there might be availability.
And I think recently, we've been meeting somewhat early in the morning. Have we been doing 7:30, 8 o'clock, in that, around that time, 8 o'clock? If that works for the applicant as well.
We have availability on September 29th and September 30th, and generally, we have been doing 8:00 AM.
So 29 and 30, so Monday or Tuesday. Board members have any preference on that number? How about Tuesday, the 30th? Tuesday, the 30th, 8:00 AM, onsite.
Now, Mr. Chair, has staff checked? Is that typically a good time for Conservation Commission members to join in?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address that question?
Yes, Jeff's a little bit quicker than I am.
Uh, yes, so generally speaking, my Conservation Commission members who are able to participate in the site walks have found 8:00 AM to be pretty amenable to their schedules. Not everyone can come because they're working, but I generally have two to three that, that are able to make that time.
That would be great, we would extend that invitation for them to join us as well. So site walk, September 30th, 8:00 AM. And we will, I think we had an opportunity, where did we park last time? Did we, we parked near the church, so maybe we could reach out to the, the church, some representatives here support that, and we, thank you, sir. We would gladly, we would thank them very much. All right, so public hearing, October 7th, site walk, September 30th. Anything else on this item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so if you find it appropriate and would like feedback from the Conservation Commission, this might be an appropriate time to request that.
We would, of course, like input from the Conservation Commission, yes.
Just out of respect, Mr. Chair, does that mean that the Conservation Commission would have enough time between the 30th and the public hearing date to formulate their findings and send correspondence to us? Do they have a meeting scheduled in that time?
It might be a little bit tight, but Shannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be clear, the Conservation Commission meets every third Wednesday of the month, so I would be able to put it on the schedule for this month. And then, generally speaking, what they do is they'll leave it open and then finalize it after the site plan, or the site walk.
So we could have a draft, they could review their project, review this project at this month's meeting, have our site walk, and by the 7th, perhaps provide a draft memo for us to begin to look at or get initial thoughts from them?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Just respectfully, Mr. Chair, I mean, we, most of the senior board members have been on the site walk at least twice. There's a lot of terrain there, and I just would hope that there's enough time for, I don't want to do injustice or pressure them to get us their findings. That's my only thought, and I understand there's a lot of historical data out there, there's a lot of existing reports that they can review, three, three wetland consultants have been out there. I just want to make sure that the Conservation Commission has time to sufficiently vet their findings before they send us a report. And at the same token, I don't want to receive their, an after-the-fact packet from the Conservation Commission before a public hearing. I don't think that's necessarily fair to anybody involved, especially public comment, so.
So Shannon, they are going to meet, when is their meeting, on the 17th, you said?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, let's, let's, let's keep our schedule, because we're going to meet again before they meet, so we can't get a, sort of a straw poll, we can't really get an update from them, we'll meet again before they meet, and then we won't see again. Let's, I share your thought, I don't want to rush them. I want, I want thoughtful comments as well. I know members were able to join us during our last walkout there, I know some of them are familiar with the project, I know this is a new project. As long as staff communicates that we're not, we like their comments, thoughtful, not looking to rush them, and I guess we'll, we'll go from there, we'll have board members, you know, commission members with us at the site walk, so that's, yeah, unless anyone has any other thoughts, I agree. Yes. Thoughts from the applicant?
Do you, does it matter if, if they went before the site walk, or do they have to do it during the site walk?
Yes, it would have to be an organized meeting, and an agenda meeting, so we can notify everyone. So unless, unless we could meet soon, before the 17th, which would be, do you see any staff time, Lisa, before that? I, I can meet, a Monday or Tuesdays work well for me as well, go ahead, Shannon.
Mr. Chair, just hold on one moment, I want to make sure that we have the appropriate noticing time available to do an earlier site walk. Thank you for giving us a moment. It looks like either the 15th or the 16th would also be doable for a site walk.
Well, let's, let's keep the Tuesday, and let's do the 16th, if that, if that's amenable still to board members. I see some head nodding. All right, does that work for you as well?
Yes.
Okay, let's shift to the 16th, then. We'll keep the 8:00 AM. And that would give the commission the opportunity to meet with us on the 16th, onsite, 8:00 AM, and then have their meeting the following night. Okay, great, thank you, everyone. Anything additional on this item, Shannon? Did we cover everything?
No, Mr. Chair, I think we have covered it all.
All right, great, thank you, sir, we will see you on the 16th, at 8:00 AM. All right, continuing- All right, continuing along here, our next item, this is seven B. This is fifty-six Spunny Lane, map one oh four, lot twelve. And this is an application of completeness review this evening for final subdivision for three-lot residential subdivision, served by private wells and subsurface wastewater disposal systems. This is in the Rural Conservation Zoning District, and this is presented this evening by Big Ledge LLC. Board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item before we begin? All right, and Lauren, anything to add on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Staff has provided a checklist and a memo. All of the items in the checklist were addressed and responded to, we're just still awaiting the identification of tax, map, lot and block numbers, and the applicant is working on those with assessing. The question of the right-of-way has been addressed in a memo. And those are all of the comments, so happy to answer any questions.
All right, great, thank you, Lauren. Board members, any questions for staff at this time on this one? I had, I had one note here, Lauren, I think this is a typo, the, the comments from police and fire. I think we just, they're the same, but I think they're. I suspect, given that, they had no comments.
Okay, um, let me see, so.
On my first page, it says, Fire Department, and then it says the Fire Department has no comments, and then it says Police Department, and then it says Fire Department has no comments.
Oh, yeah, apologies.
That's okay.
Um, yes, let me just verify, but I believe that both departments had no comments. Just pull that up. Yeah, so the Police Department commented that they had no concerns. And the Fire Department had no concerns as well, so.
Okay, great, thank you. So with that, any, any other thoughts from board members for staff or questions? All right, and with that, we have the applicant with us this evening, do you want to give us an update?
Yeah, we basically got everything you asked done. No, we have, uh, everything's being complete, the map and lot numbers were changed today. Of course, once you guys give us final approval, then Planning Department will do a findings of facts. Say any little notes that they want us to add on the plans, we'll have that done as well, and get you guys to sign the plans, so. As far as I know, there's no other outstanding items.
All right, great, thank you. Just, can you, for the record official.
Jason Labonte, developer.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Any questions from board members for the applicant on this item? Lauren, were there? Well, we're application of completeness this evening, yep, okay.
Mr. Chair, with that, I would move that we find the application complete.
All right, thank you for the motion, Jeff.
Second.
Second by Jim, thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to find the application for fifty-six Spunny Lane complete? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes seven zero.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we schedule the public hearing for October seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff.
Second.
Second by Jim, thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion to schedule a public hearing for October seventh? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes seven zero. Is that everything on this item, Lauren? Is there anything outstanding?
Nothing additional, thank you, that's everything.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We will see you October seventh. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is item seven C. And this is a request for recommendation to City Council for a street acceptance for Amari Springs subdivision. And this is as required per chapter one eighty-six of our ordinance. Board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item before we begin? All right, and with that, Lauren, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the staff received the request for street acceptance for Amari Springs. Currently, the applicant is working with Public Works on their punch list. The punch list should be available for the next meeting. And we just recommend continuing until the September sixteenth meeting. There are some documents that the city's attorney is reviewing currently. Happy to answer any additional questions.
All right, thank you, Warren. Board members, any questions for staff at this time? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, is September sixteenth, I thought that was a training meeting for the board, are we gonna be conducting normal business during that? Or will we be going out further?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to answer that question?
Yes, if you could, Shannon, yes, you're fast.
So the answer is, it is both a training, and we will also be addressing regular items. So it would be the training first, and then the regular items after.
Okay, so our, our agenda will just have training for the first portion, and then we'll move into some regular business?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
With that, Mr. Chair, I will move that we continue review of the request for city acceptance of Public Way for Amari Springs subdivision to September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jeff. Thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second, Joyce. Any additional discussion? So. Lauren, the, the applicant has clear direction from staff, there's a few items that they're working through, you mentioned a punch list, but they're working with staff and city engineer on, on a few of those items.
Mr. Chair, that's correct.
Okay. With that, Mr. Labonte, do you have, are there any items that are of concern, or anything that staff's asked for there?
No, we had as-built percent back in July twenty-second to Public Works, we've gone, we haven't received any comments back as far as any changes. They seem to be fine with everything on that aspect. I don't think Planning Board knew that, we kind of sent it straight to Joel Ovarius, and he's the one that reviews it anyways. So they have those, we're not expecting any changes on that, so we feel that's complete. As far as the, the documents, those were approved in January twenty-four, when the project got approved. So my understanding is Emily sent it to attorney to review it again. So as far as I know, we have everything in place, we're just waiting for the town to give back any comments, if they have anything, so. Public Works had given us a punch list for everything, we just finished all the finished pavement last week. The only thing we have is to tie in the driveway aprons, which they want to give the pavement a few days to cool off before they did that. We're expecting to have that done this week, and striped crosswalks, and that's the only thing we have on our list. So we're planning by Friday to be a hundred percent completely done.
Okay.
Mostly the reasoning for this meeting is just trying to stay ahead, because Public Works wants to know what their plowing schedule's gonna be, and we're trying to get this conveyed before fall time, so they can, so they have everything in place. So, and then we still have a council meeting to go to as well, so.
Sure, okay. Great, any other thoughts or discussion items for board members? So with that, can we? Can we request staff put together a draft recommendation to council for the board to review? When we see you on the sixteenth, we said?
Okay, perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, with that, any other thoughts or concerns? Okay.
Quick question, Mr. Chair, is that at six o'clock? On the sixteenth?
I, I suspect we have some training beforehand, and that's probably gonna be an hour or so. So we can confirm with staff that timeframe, but we'll, we'll make sure that it's clear in the agenda.
Okay.
What we'll do there, so everyone's notified appropriately, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, with that, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, motion passes seven zero. All right, great, thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is item seven D. And this is sixty-one Cascade Road, map forty-eight, lot five, and map forty-eight, lot seven. And this is a continued application of completeness review in a public hearing for a preliminary subdivision for three-lot subdivision on Portland Road. Any, any conflicts or disclosures, board members, on this item before we begin? All right, Shannon, anything to add on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do not have anything additional to add at this time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that people may have.
All right, great. Board members, any questions for Shannon at this moment? Jeff?
Can you give me a little bit of feedback as far as the pedestrian access meeting that you had? Is, is what's, I, I guess I felt like probably the end of the packet due to the first applicant's thousand pages, but seemed a little confused that staff had some concerns about like the, the mid-crossing in the forty mile an hour zone, but that's what's on the plan, so. Is it my interpretation that staff wasn't really in favor of the mid-crossing on the plan as it's showing now, but that's what the applicant has decided to bring forth?
Mr. Chair, may I address that question?
If you could, yes, please, Shannon.
So, yes, we had a meeting, planning staff, engineering staff, and the applicant and his engineering crew. And we discussed two different types of sidewalk infrastructure during that meeting. The city brought forth what they were in favor of, which is extending the existing sidewalk on the other side of Cascade Road down to Cascade Falls Park. And then also creating a mid-block crosswalk at the intersection of Cascade Road and Waterfall Drive. And then bringing down the sidewalk down to the entrance of where the proposed athletic dome is. During that time, there was also some conversation about, and in lieu of fee regarding lot A within the subdivision. And so we discussed that. The sidewalk infrastructure I just mentioned is the city's preferred sidewalk infrastructure. What is being proposed was something that the applicants had talked with Main DOT about. Main DOT said, you know, they would be supported of that through a construction, like build, buildability lens, but that ultimately, it would be up to, you know, the city and the planning board to decide what kind of infrastructure they would want for the build-out of that area. So I hope that provides some context.
Thank you for that clarity, but could you, so on that August nineteenth meeting, Main DOT was not present, that was city staff, applicants, and their engineering team?
Mr. Chair, can I?
If you could, thank you.
Actually, there was one Main DOT staff member that was there, you'll have to forgive me, I do forget what his name was. I'm sure Jason can clarify which individual was there. That individual also thought that potentially this project was under a TMP review, and that is not the case, since they took off the phasing for the exterior field.
Great, thank you. So the state representative must have been John Skelly. Because that was the only name that I saw that I didn't have where it was from, because that was my question. Okay, great. Any other questions for staff at this time? Any applicants with us this evening, if you want to give us additional update, please?
Thank you, Matt, Jason Vafianis, Atlantic Resource Consultants. Yeah, so Shannon filled you guys in to that meeting, I will add a couple things from the applicant's side. So we originally sent the plan with a sidewalk on the frontage side of our, the south side of Cascade Road with the recommendation that we could put it in on that side. There's a much steeper slope and much less room to work with, I think we've all been out there in the sidewalk, probably not to look at that particularly, but. And that we could fit that in geometrically if we stayed within the existing pavement, ground down the road, sort of redid the, the paint lines, and squeeze the sidewalk in, so essentially you'd have a sidewalk, a guardrail sidewalk, guardrail. We sent that plan to DOT for a comment. John Skelly came up with the design, who's MDOT's, he's a step above the traffic engineer, so he's like regional coordinator, something like that. He does a lot of the construction side stuff. Were this a TMP, that would likely be where he would be asking for the sidewalk, because he doesn't, the problem with changing the crown and squeezing down the lanes and the shoulder widths are that he foresees maybe having to put a left-hand turn lane in some taper somewhere as more stuff comes on, Waterfall Drive potentially, or even if there's other property, undeveloped properties down here. So that design is the most buildable, we do realize that it may not be the most desirable right off the cuff, you know, because we're doing a subdivision and doing a development, and then we're putting a sidewalk across the street. But that crossing would be, when it the street, but that crossing would be, when it comes to mid-block crossings, it would be the same setup that you see at the Eastern Trail Crossing. So, they'd be flat, like we would do flashing warning signals, crosswalk there. It is allowed in the main MDOT design manual. You can put a mid-block crossing over two lanes of traffic in a 40 mile an hour zone. So, the applicant's, and its constructibility is much, I don't want to say cheaper because it's not cheap, but it's, it's much more feasible. We're talking structure if we have to go on the other side. We will have to span that bridge with something, something pretty, pretty, I mean, that's a pretty wide brook. So, and we still have room to do it on the upstream side, north side of Cascade. So, that's where we are. We came up with a pricing for that. The city engineer asked us to come up with pricing so that we could get to a cost and then generate a per linear foot cost because we still don't know. If Cumberland Farms comes online, I haven't read their traffic movement permit, but I do know that there would be potential signalization at Waterfall Drive, especially if lot A of this site is developed in the next couple of years, which I'm sure we're looking at something along that timeline. So, really, we were, from a planning perspective, I think it's wise to hold the money and see. I don't, for this particular, not to talk for lot B, should that project move forward, I don't see a whole lot of foot traffic being generated until we get more stuff going. But, just to have that money set aside, to me, is the wisest choice, but obviously, it's up to the board.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant at this time? Jim?
So, with, with respect to the sidewalk, I, I think I understand your, the applicant's proposing a sidewalk that will go east, I guess, to Cascade Falls Park, then cross the road, and then folks would walk up on the other side
Right.
of Cascade Road. But, the planning staff was encouraging, not only that, but they were encouraging a sidewalk on the southerly side of the road, all the way to Waterfall Drive.
Yeah, I think planning staff, I don't want to speak for them, but they were saying, just build it on the south side. You wouldn't have to, you wouldn't be putting, we wouldn't be going across the street to Cascade Park, Brook Park. We would just be going on our frontage down to Waterfall Drive and then connecting to that sidewalk at Waterfall Drive with, with a, sorry, with a crosswalk, which would still be a mid-block crossing until there's signalization. So, essentially, this project, what you have before us and what's planned, there will be a mid-block crossing, you know, even though there's a road there, that's not, not a stopping intersection.
So, the, the photograph that's being shown on the screen right now, that it shows sidewalks on both sides of the road being constructed. So, that's what I was referring to.
Yeah.
It sounded like the planning staff was trying to encourage you to do the other side of the road too, but maybe not have a crossing back to this, like, sports facility.
Yeah. That, that wasn't my understanding from the meeting. I think it's, we're, I mean, we're responsible for sidewalk on one side of the road, and so, or linear footage equal to our frontage, right? So, I didn't hear that we were, that was expected that we would build two sidewalks. But, I guess maybe I'd have to ask you to kick the staff on that.
Right. I'm not, I wasn't trying to, you know, encourage them to ask for something more than they already did, but I guess I was referring to this photograph, and, and you're right, I don't see a crossing from the south side to the north side at Cascade Park. So, I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure what I think of the sidewalk issue. I, I'm still undecided on that, but I will say that you have presented a sidewalk proposal in your application, and, and, you know, as we have a more fulsome conversation about that, then we can, you know, maybe have that revised further. But, at least for, it's my perspective, Mr. Chair, that for purposes of application completeness, there is a sidewalk proposal that was presented to us that would address that, that question.
Great, thank you, Jim. That was, this graphic was sort of my question as well. I was trying to understand if this was one thought or sort of two thoughts overlaid graphically to show them together in their comparison. But, any other thoughts from board members? Questions? So, we've, again, we have application of completeness review on this item. We've seen it a few times here. We've been to the site a few times as well. Any other thoughts? Jim?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, there was one more. I, I think the applicant's asking for two waivers as well.
Yes.
For application completeness. So, one of the waivers, if I have it correct, is chapter 188, section 502d17, the street plan and profiles, and the second is chapter 188, 502e5, the draft homeowners' association documents. And, and I know you've talked to us about that before, but maybe you could just briefly explain to the board what you're looking for and why?
Yeah. So, those two waivers, you remember, we started with a whole laundry list of waivers, and we, we got down to two. So, the first waiver for the street profiles is we're not actually designing any roads, and so that refers to proposed roads, certainly not existing roads. And then, the second waiver is for homeowners' association documents. There is no, there will be no association. There'll be two separate lot owners with no shared services whatsoever. The brook does a good job of separating the properties, so no, no shared items whatsoever. So, we don't feel like we need that for the move forward.
Great, thank you. Did that answer your question, Jim?
It didn't. Mr. Chair, and when it's appropriate, I'll move to grant those waivers. It, it doesn't seem that either one is essential to this application. So, I think a waiver would make sense on both.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move that we grant the requested waivers, first of chapter 188, section 502d17, the street plans and profiles, and also the waiver of chapter 188, section 502e5 regarding draft homeowners' association documents.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion on the motion to grant the waivers as amended? All right. Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Abstain.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. All right. Any additional thoughts on the application of completeness? Any additional questions for the applicant? Jeff?
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have an after-the-fact packet. It was included in our emails from Kelly Archer, which brings up a very good point with regards to the site plan, and they, they talk about the location of lot 6, and it seems like there's a lot of ambiguity. There's no evidence or deed found to determine the location in the area included in the map and lot, but apparently, there is a property card for that lot. Doesn't that create a bit of a, kind of a flag, or, I mean, we're creating a subdivision, but we don't, we don't have real clear identity of the lots and area within what we're subdividing. I guess the question, we have to decide if that's complete as a board, but is that something staff has kind of had ironed out and is satisfied with, that the area that's being subdivided and encompassed is truly deeded with right title and interest to have the subdivision?
Jason, you want to tackle that one? I think this one, we've talked about a few times, but...
Yeah, so, Shannon, I don't know if you have the plan up that you can put up. Is, I may be confused as well, because there was a lot within the lot. Is that one, yeah. So, we spoke to the, the attorney who originally did the, the work for the trust, and apparently, that was a piece of land that the owner created for himself, Mr. McLallan, before he died. And then, we believe that is now in assessor's era. The, the boundary survey that we got, there should be a note on there. Sort of, there was no formal recording of that deed, and it just seems to be appearing on the town's assessing website.
Okay, thank you. That was, that was my recollection from when we first saw you with this project, that, that was just sort of, I don't want to say a made-up area, but an area that was, that wasn't really formally recorded.
My, my understanding is the boundary survey, once it's sealed by our surveyor, includes the deed research on all the area land, contiguous land within those boundaries, and that, that certifies ownership.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would have to be listed as another.
Understood. So, then we have, we have the proposed lot A, we have the proposed lot B, and we have the remaining land, that's lot 7.
Merge, merge with...
Right. Down in that bottom corner.
Correct.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Jeff?
No, I guess, could we have staff just confirm that this has been, been vetted? And, we're all, good, I mean, our, our legal description is only talking about maps 48, lots 5, and 7. We're not talking about a mysterious lot 6. And, and I think you're right, we have talked about it before, but it's showing up on their site plan. I just want to be sure that, you know, it's all been vetted by staff and, and the assessor and legal, if, if that was what was done, so that we're not stepping out of bounds by approving a subdivision that's including a lot that's not listed.
Shannon, go ahead.
Okay. I want to check the Iwork record just real quick to see if we did receive comments from the assessing department. As a regular, as our regular process has it, we always send everything that we get to the assessing department, and they provide us comments. So, just hold on one moment.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, maybe this would be a good time for us. We, about this time, usually take a seven, five or seven-minute break to, to stretch, and we could give staff time to review that without the pressure of us all staring at them.
Sure. Is it, did you, a couple minutes, or did you figure it out?
I, I did check. I have no comments from the assessing department. This is something that I could reach out to them specifically about. To my understanding, that this has been vetted at the staff level, but I can always go back and have them put that in writing.
I think we can, I think it'd be good to reaffirm that. I, I know, I'm trying to go back myself. We've, we have meeting notes and whatnot from March through, beginning in March, and I, I thought that was an item that we had, trying to go back to the drawing here, where we, we had asked that it be in there for additional clarity, and now that it's been some time, it might be adding unnecessary confusion because it's in there, but I guess a, a good triple check wouldn't hurt.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I would note the, on the site plan itself, it describes this approximate square as having no evidence or deed found to determine location, and notes that the area, this area was included in map 48, lot 5. So, it sounds like it's being noted as a surveyor note rather than showing boundaries of an actual lot.
Yeah, and I, I think the only reason we show is because it shows up on the tax maps. Typically, we, we wouldn't, and that, that might be a little bit on us. Maybe we should have gone to assessing and had them strike it, but...
Yeah, I agree. I, where this is, we have the stamped drawings from surveyors. They've done the research. They have a note on it here. I, I don't have any additional questions or concerns on it, but I don't think it's a bad idea to have the assessing department give a revised update from their end as well. Any other thoughts or questions from board members?
Mr. Chair, actually, I'm sorry, there, there is one. I, I was looking through the packet, and then I realized that our normal application completeness checklist, I, I didn't see it there. So, I started going back in time to see whether or not one was created earlier, that, you know, there were just a few items not met, and that's why it wasn't reprinted. But, at least I, I find those very helpful to focus our attention on what, you know, what obligations have been met by the applicant or, or not, you know, if there are some items that haven't been completed in that checklist. So, I, I don't know if anyone else found that, that that would be helpful, but I find it helpful anyway.
Are you saying, Jim, that you've, you're looking for that document, you're, you've pulled up an old version? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's, that's, that's what I was looking for, Mr. Chair. I, I, I didn't see the, I mean, there's normally
Yeah.
a, a document, an application completeness form, and I studied that pretty carefully. I didn't see one for this one, so then I thought, well, maybe if we go farther back in time, I'll see it, but I, maybe, maybe I didn't go far enough back. I, I couldn't find it.
Well, let's pull it up here. Let's, we'll get our March 4th where we saw this application initially.
Mr. Chair, I, I did find the preliminary subdivision checklist on, on the March 4th. I hadn't gone back that far before. I, I do see it, and there are quite a few things that were left for follow-up, which is why Jason came up with the, you know, hypothetical plan for the subdivision, that, that lot A. And I think it would just be helpful for our record if we had a, a form that, you know, only mentioned the waivers that are needed and, and that would demonstrate, I assume, that the applicant has completed all the other obligations.
I understand.
You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to hold them up or slow them down.
No, no, no.
I, I do find that very helpful, though, that, that form very helpful. I, I do find that very helpful, though, that, that form very helpful.
Shannon, is that something you can share on the screen for the board here, that checklist from March fourth? I know it's going to be outdated as Jim has mentioned, but I think that checklist with the, with section six, that updated waiver request that Jason's provided, I think would, I think those two documents in conjunction might help the board.
Yes, I'm sorry. Could you give me the date again?
That was March fourth.
March fourth, yes. Hold on one moment.
So this is the checklist, Jim, that you were able to pull up as well?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
So a few of these items here, so that the preliminary plan, that's what the applicants provided here that we've reviewed. We've satisfied the subdivision name, address of the record owners. Got the survey. Have the boundary lines. We spoke about that a moment ago. There's no streets, no new streets as part of this. Buildings and outlines, significant features of wetlands, that's part of the survey, wooded areas and the streams. Wetlands, the street lines, there aren't any. We talked about that as part of our waiver. Lot lines, setbacks. Monuments. Five oh two, D fifteen. We have that. I skipped one, sorry, but there's. The applicant provided modeling information and wetland information, excuse me, not wetland information, but stormwater mitigation. Can't get my machine, of course, to work with me on some of my note taking skills here. So the open space.
There'd be an in lieu fee.
Fee in lieu of, that's right. Yep, I see that here.
Which doesn't include, then you don't need to grant a waiver if there isn't an in lieu fee.
Correct. Sixteen. Your conceptual lot plan satisfies sixteen. Granted the waiver for seventeen. Eighteen, the conceptual plan satisfies that component. Erosion control nineteen, that's satisfied. I F and W, we have that information. Historic, we talked about that. Subdivision deed. E three. We don't need that waiver anymore. Stormwater drainage data, design analysis, we have that. HOA, we draw, we gave that waiver. Traffic report. Open space fee in lieu of. We don't need the waiver for the anticipated amount of buildings because we have that conceptual plan. Stormwater quality watershed, we have those calculations. Financial technical capacity. Measures during construction, that's in your plan as well with your stormwater. Is there any, I think we've, is there anything in there that Jim or any other board members think we've? It's not clear that we've missed?
Mr. Chair, I think the, the applicant addresses, I think most, if not all of these in their July ninth letter also, which is in our packet.
Yes. I agree. That's the letter that I'm looking through as well. Any other thoughts, questions from board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I agree with Jeff. I'm a little bit concerned about having a plan with a lot that does not, whether it exists or is just on the town plans. Is there a way that once we have assessor confirmation that it does not exist, to have the plan without the lot on it?
Well, we certainly do that for the final point. Yeah, and so. I guess my, my point is I know it doesn't exist and we're just waiting on town staff to.
Yeah, just so that when we sign, we have.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no one's asking for the sign tonight.
Yeah, so if the board finds the application complete, we can, as part of the next step, we can get another confirmation from the assessing department on, on their take on it as well. So yes, we can get additional clarity on that item.
Mr. Chair, I mean.
Yes.
I would concur. I, I think the application's complete. You know, we've given them, they've, they've complied with our ordinance in a very unique situation. They're trying to basically make paper lots and they have to go through a lot of other steps and they've done that. They've submitted all that material. So I would have no particular issue with finding the preliminary application complete. I would have concerns like Carrie Lynn has about doing a final approval with this questionable lot. So I think if we can get that kind of cleared up would be very beneficial. But I, I don't particularly have any heartburn about finding the application complete this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts or questions from board members?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll acknowledge that, you know, all, all the materials we've, we've been reviewing this for some time. And that cumulatively, all the materials would support Jeff's position. It would just feel more comfortable if we had one of those checklists, but I'm, I'm kind of a checklist guy, so I like that sort of thing. But it doesn't mean we need it in every instance.
So you're, you want to see, you, you want to revise checklist? Is that, is that what you're?
I, I would feel more comfortable with the checklist, but, but I acknowledge this, as, as Joyce indicated, as Jeff indicated, if you look cumulatively at all the information, particularly the, there's an August letter where where the applicant goes through step by step, all the, all the requirements and, and addresses them. It's so, so the, I guess it's presented to us in a slightly different fashion than we've, we usually are see these without the checklist, but I'm not going to be a stickler for a checklist if all the information is otherwise there. It would just be easier for me to see and think about, but it doesn't mean that it's essential.
I, I understand now. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, on that note, I'd move to find the application complete.
I'll second.
Motion by Joyce, second by Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion on the motion to find the application complete? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Abstain.
I will vote yes as well. Motion passes six zero with one abstention. All right, with that, we additionally have this item scheduled for a public hearing this evening. Does board have any other questions or other items to discuss?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing.
I will second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second. Jeff? Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor of opening the public hearing, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing. If anyone is with us this evening to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We will collect comments and address them as necessary and appropriate at the conclusion.
My name is Fred Vitandis Jr. I live at nine eleven Portland Road. I have questions about that lot. Map forty-eight, lot six, the one, the square lot that you were just talking about. This, what I'm looking at now is a copy of notes from a map. It's a drawing provided by surveyors from New Hampshire. It's included in the plan set recently filed. It came from twenty twenty-five eight twenty-one plan set. That's the name of the file. And I think it's from page five. I'm not sure about that, but I think it's page five. It's note number fifteen. It says, Saco map forty-eight lot six is a one acre parcel with a former gravel pit operated by the city of Saco. The city of Saco quit claimed all interest in the parcel to the Cascade Company on January thirteenth, nineteen fifty-three. And recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds, book twelve forty, page ninety-two. So apparently it was an actual lot, a separate lot, and the city of Saco operated gravel pit there at one time. The note goes on to say that Cascade Company owned the surrounding parcel at that time, map forty-eight lot five. So that would be January thirteenth, nineteen fifty-three. Cascade Company owned map forty-eight lot five, that's the surrounding parcel. And the city of Saco sold the square in the middle to, to Cascade Company at that time. The note goes on, Cascade Company, Inc. conveyed the one acre parcel to Noel Realty Corporation. There's nothing in the note that says Noel Realty owned map forty-eight lot five, the surrounding parcel. I'm assuming at some point Noel Realty did own that, it would own the whole thing. And then the note says Noel Realty Corporation omitted the one acre parcel description in its deed to Saco Mobile Homes. So if Noel Realty owned the entire piece, map forty-eight lot five, the surrounding area, and also owned the square in the middle, I, I can understand that, you know, Noel Realty could maybe, maybe made a new just deed description and sold the whole thing to Saco Mobile Homes. That could be, but I don't know that Noel Realty owned map forty-eight lot five. And when I see that Noel Realty omitted the one acre parcel description, I have a question if that was included, you know, if the outside, if map forty-eight lot five, the surrounding area was sold to Saco Mobile Homes, was that one acre square included? You know, because they could have sold the outside part, but they didn't convey the middle. I don't know. Or if they owned both parcels, they could have just changed the description and sold the whole thing as one piece. I don't know. I haven't seen the deeds. It's just, there's a question here and I think it should be cleared up. And you probably have to look at the deeds to clear it up. Also, I was going to talk about traffic. If that's, that has to do with subdivision. I, I know I'm going, it'll sound like I'm going, jumping to the other thing, to the project, but it does kind of involve the project. I looked at some other parts of the, what was submitted. This is from twenty twenty-five eight twenty-one resubmission, that file. And I, I looked at descriptions of the, the occupant load and I saw from, it's a drawing labeled A zero zero one mentions eighty-six people for sporting participants and spectators at two hundred and forty-eight. That adds up to three hundred and thirty-four people. And then on A four, that's another drawing. It's a different layout, have two smaller soccer fields and basketball courts. That drawing, A zero zero four has a list of areas for spectators. Standing spectator space fifty-eight occupants, fixed seating sixty, twelve, twelve, seventy-two and eighteen. If you add all those up, you get two hundred and thirty-two spectators there. For two soccer fields, the smaller style soccer fields, there'd be sixty-two people there. That adds up to two hundred and ninety-four. And I haven't added anything for basketball. Basketball, just one court, just the players on the court, that'd be ten, so that's also over three hundred. And those numbers are higher than what we heard in July. It's two fifty-seven. Anyway, if occupants load is over three hundred, it seems to me that there's not enough parking. That's one thing. I think the parking space is a hundred and thirty-two now. I'm not sure. It seems like that's not enough parking. Well, anyway, back on subdivision, I'm, I'm thinking of traffic. And I think if there three hundred people, there could be enough traffic generated, so it might become a problem. I think the subdivision regulations, regulations talk about a traffic study. If there are forty parking spaces, well, this, the plan has a hundred and thirty-two and also projected occupancy of, of over three hundred. So I think there could be a traffic problem and there also may not be enough parking spaces. In February, I, I wasn't here in February, but I did see some meetings. I guess I watched some of it at home. And I, there was a mention of a, a lane, possibly creating a lane for turning into this project. That might, and it, it's possible that one might be needed. Maybe that should be looked into. And this, this, a, a note from the first thing where I was reading, the first drawing. first thing where I was reading, the first drawing, it says that a portion of the subject parcel budding Cascade Road was conveyed in a warranty deed by the Cascade Improvement Company to the State of Maine on November 3, 1930, recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book 810, page 336. I'm not clear exactly where that is, but it must be an easement or right-of-way, running parallel to Route 98. And I'm concerned that if at some point a lane is needed for turning, the brook is there, and this easement or whatever it is, that was given to, sold to the State of Maine, runs parallel to Route 98, the brook and that easement belonging to State of Maine would likely interfere with a turning lane. So it may not be possible to put a turning lane there. If traffic becomes a problem, turning lane can't be added, what could you do? And we're trying, I tried to think of what could be done, and one thing is a lot of this, possibly making Cascade Road one-way between Route 1 and the Ross Road. I don't like that idea. I think it would upset a lot of people. But if the project goes through and traffic becomes a problem, you know, something would have to be done, and it might not be possible to add a turning lane. I guess that's all right now. I'm running out of time.
Okay, thank you. I think we have all your comments blended a little bit between two projects here, but I think we've, I think we've captured and understand what you were, what you were looking at as far as this project. Thank you.
I'm Andrea Fattanides. I'm representing Fred and Marge Fattanides, who are butters. Now, I don't know who the applicant is. I thought at first the applicant was Michelle McClellan, and then the trust appeared. I don't know if she's the trustee of the trust or is there someone else? So that's a question I have. And also picking up on the traffic, I think that the traffic for the entire subdivision should be looked into, not just, not just where the proposed dome would be, not just that lot, because there will be other traffic generated by the rest of the subdivision. Looking at section 10.6.10, it talks about shadow projections. When proposed buildings are located near lot lines or another building, "Shadow projection shall be examined to ensure that solar access to any other building or property is not blocked or substantially reduced." And I think due to the unusually large mass and height of the building and the close proximity to our property line, a shadow study should be required in order to determine whether the dome will block out sunlight and/or cause shadows on our property. Another concern I have is with the wetlands. When we went on the site walks, one was, I think during this, when there was a lot of snow on the ground. Another site walk, things had dried up. I don't think there was much water there, but there is a lot of water there norm during the, at times. And a building is being proposed on the wetlands. Also, the parking lot, so there's pavement on the wetlands, there's a structure on the wetlands. And I'm wondering, is that going to disturb and alter the water patterns? How is that going to affect our property? Will water be backing up on our property? The city engineer said something about if the structure goes on, the wetlands, the wetlands will have to be drained, and I never heard anything more about that. If there's a plan to drain the wetlands, or what's going to happen? I guess that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, and I have to make a disclosure, disclaimer. I have not reviewed this particular packet, even though some components of what I did do, a detailed review, does blend into this application. So in speaking with this application, thank you for bringing up the March, I think you said 3rd, and the checklist. All of these are based on ordinances. And I would be looking for the boundary lines of adjacent land and names of owners determined from the most recent assessors' records. That would include the Lot 6 and Lot 5. And there is a property card that has ownership. There's at least five names on that. When I looked at that at the next application, I did it as a layperson. I am not able to do an abstract title search, but I am a, as a disclosure, a retired real estate broker and who did do abstract title searches very easily, a simple one, not full-blown, not, not totally comprehensive. But I do warrant, I warrant you to have legal, look at this Lot 6. I went back to 1890, and all those other names that I put into the other letter, they are all included in those deeds that I reviewed. And that doesn't just include Blue Haven and, sorry, I'm going off the cuff. I'm not prepared in a written statement. Cumberland Farms. There are several other references to right-of-ways, several encroachments, easements that I read. I am not an attorney, but I am questioning this very, very hard. We do not want to build on something that is the rights of another. And I do not want seven planning board members, or six, if you abstain, signing a site plan at the final. I do agree, in the quick research I did back here tonight on this application, that it is application completeness. I can, I can, I can go with that. But in the meantime, assessors, attorneys, and anybody else that you deem appropriate should be looking at Lot 6. And if Lot 6, which I do believe there is a break in the chain of title, and that was to Noel Realty, and what they, they omitted the language, and that's the break. There was another break about 50 years later. The references, I read every, pretty much most of you know, I read everything. I do read the fine print in the plans, and that's where all the meat is. That's where all the juice is. That's where the boundary surveyor is saying, this is not a title exam. So it makes me, when I read his words on, on the plan, makes me go, oop, what's the next step? So it was the words in the application. It was the comments from professionals that made me go down this road. I didn't do it any other way, you know. So as far as, there's several unknowns to Lot 5, Lot 6, and Lot 7, that before you decide anyone's going to build or subdivide, please do that initial step. And I'm not one to really apologize as much, but I do apologize for this lateness of my responses. I was away for several months. I was not interested in this property. I was interested in the dome only from a source perspective, because we never discussed it, and I really wanted to learn back in February when I attended. And I know I'm blending the two applications. I guess the other speakers are doing it, but they're blended. You're doing it in tandem. So I beseech you to really vet this out properly and have all documents as far as in our ordinance. Not only that, you need the location, I'm sorry, any easements within or adjacent to the subdivision. That would be Lot 5 and Lot 6. There's several there. Do you have those copies? It said, please provide. There's another one in here. It says, "Lot lines with dimensions, zoning setback lines, and the area of each lot in square feet and acres and lot numbers." That's why I'm asking for the meats and bounds on Lot 6. And then, I'm not an attorney, and in the real estate world, a lot within a lot and then setbacks to lots, I have so many different questions. Are there setbacks to this lot that the City of Saco did own? The ball was dropped several different times. So please, I can go further with this, but I think, and I thank you very much, with my two letters, which was last minute, but this is a continued public hearing, and this is when I returned home to really vet out the next application. And the sense that I'm repeating myself again, I know, and that's why I like a written document to read. But several of these things, were they provided in this application, what I just read off the checklist? Do you have copies of that? Can we read, can you read them? Can I read them? That's a good start. So anyway, I thank you for your time. I thank you for reading my two letters, and I really want you to protect not only the applicant, the butters, but the City of Saco and yourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'll be real quick. I am the, my client is the one who has the property under contract. We've been under contract on this land for over-
Sorry, Brandon Mitchell, 6 Rocky Hill. Thank you.
Yes, I am the broker for the gentleman who has this piece of land under contract. We've been under contract over a year. One of our first contingencies is to review title. He has hired his law firm to thoroughly vet out and review the title. We came up with zero issues. We wouldn't be this far along in this process if there was. We would have had to cure any title issue before we'd even moved to this step. So everything's been checked on our end thoroughly by our attorneys, and we are, again, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I just have a very minor comment, and it's more about the meeting minutes, because the last speaker gave an address, Rocky Hill Road, but we have one of those in Saco, and I believe it's Cape Elizabeth. Yeah, just wanted to get that in the minutes, so that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, seeing it looks like no other members of the public choosing to speak, I move that we continue this public hearing and review, or continue the public hearing until October 7th, 2025? Thank you for the motion, Jeff.
I'll second.
Second by Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion? Does October 7th work, Shannon, in our agenda? Should the application continue to then?
Hold on one moment, Mr. Chair. I'm going to confer with Lisa, just to see what we've got on there so far.
Thank you for holding. So in conferring with Lisa, right now we only have two things scheduled for that meeting, which is the Bradley Estates project and the smutty lane subdivision, so.
So there would be an opportunity?
Yes.
Thank you. Any additional discussion by board members to continue public hearing to October 7th?
Mr. Chair, I guess we should just make it clear to the applicant what else we might want or need from them.
Yeah, I think we, if we continue public hearing, then we can have additional board deliberation, and then we can continue the application if we feel necessary. Yeah. Great. Any additional thoughts? All right, those in favor of continuing public hearing to October 7th? Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Abstain.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Okay, back to the board. We found the application complete. We heard from some neighbors, and I guess if, well, before I ask Jason to come back up and maybe touch upon a few of these items, do you have any, any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
Mr. Chair, I think, I mean, we talked about it briefly, but the more details that were brought forth, you know, I truly believe that we need to have peer review, legal review on this whole deed discrepancy, because it seems like there's a lot more kind of hidden there than what is in, you know, my, my field, field strengths. And, you know, Ms. Archer has presented lots of very great information before, and that was one of her professional venues. I think that having some time to have our assessor verify that, you know, there are five, six previous owners and where that chain of ownership may have gotten lost, I don't think it's very appropriate for us as a board just to take the applicant's legal team's view that, oh, all's fine and dandy. This sounds like there's a lot more here than, than I'm comfortable moving on until we have some professional review on the level, starting with staff at the assessor's office, and sounds like as well as, you know, an attorney to dig into, you know, how this lot came to be and where it exists now, and where did it get, where did it fall off the map? I mean, obviously, a surveyor put it on his map to protect his professional investments, right? He obviously was uncomfortable enough to say, hey, this was here, but I don't know where it is. If it had been truly vetted, in my opinion, and the legal team had said, there's absolutely no issue here, and consulted with the surveyor, the surveyor would have said, yeah, I agree with you. I'll take it off the plan. There's no need to have a flag. I mean, surveyors are usually very diligent about noting, you know, when monuments are held or not held, it's, it's part of their reputation. So I would hope that in this time, we're continuing out, you know, four weeks, that'll give city staff and a peer review of some sort. I would probably recommend like a title attorney to look into this so that we can move forward, because I surely don't want to approve any subdivision where the applicant doesn't have right title and interest to a parcel of land, particularly if they were, you know, obviously much deeper underlying easements, setbacks within- much deeper underlying easements, setbacks within setbacks within a lot. It's just, it seems very cumbersome and overwhelming to my thought process, but I would rather have some legal feedback that we're, we're moving forward in a legitimate legal, legally an approved way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members?
I'd probably be happy at a start with title report from the attorney who did the title search, because they should have put together an entire timeline and deed history. The other thing I think it would be helpful for us is just having a, an updated diagram that shows us where the sidewalks are really going to be, so that we don't have sidewalks showing up on both sides of the street if that's not where you're proposing to put them.
All right, thank you. Any other thoughts? So, I, go ahead.
Well, I guess I was more focused on the, the bigger picture of, of the legal part of the review and the subdivision plan. If we're going to go further in sidewalks, I would absolutely agree. I think we need a finalized plan, because I would not be in support of any midway crossing near the Cascade Brook Park. It's a much higher speed zone. We know that people at these events typically want to go to convenience stores, 7-Elevens coming in. We don't want them crossing the street twice. I feel like I tend to be the advocate on the board for sidewalks. We've talked about it other, other places on the main streetway. This is our opportunity. I grant, get it, it might be more difficult from a construction cost point of view, but it's the burden of the applicant to come forth with the resolution. And keeping them on their side of the street to what will be the most futuristic thing is going to be the Cumberland Farmers being built out. It's already approved, right? And then, we know that that will possibly trigger an additional traffic movement where signalization will go in. Well, that's where we want pedestrians to cross, is at a controlled intersection. So let's let this applicant, if he's going to come forth, build the sidewalk on the side, the south side of the street, get us to, you know, Waterfall Drive. If we have strobe and beacons for four years, five years, at least we have something there at a slower, more visible lane place that's closer to the turn lanes. To me, that's where it needs to be. Then we also need to talk about the length of sidewalk, right? We're only talking 700 feet, where their proposal is supposed to be close to 1,400 and something. City staff is offering a solution, which would be ideal, right, to do one on the north side, and we have to decide if we are going to waive that piece of it or hold them to our standards to build the total length. I, at the very least, want them on the south side, all the way to Waterfall Drive. I think that's the most prudent. That's where kids that are recreating on bigger weekend events, they're going to want to go to the 7-Eleven at some point, yes. Hopefully, the infill of Waterfall Drive would want to make their way over. Let them cross at a signalized intersection where it's safe. So, I would like to see that finalized sidewalk proposal as well before we get to final plans. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts? Jim?
Well, I'm, I'm leaning towards Jeff's position on this. That's why I indicated earlier, I, you know, certainly the applicants come up with a plan, but I agree with Jeff that I think the best place for the sidewalk would be on the south side, because that's where, if anyone's going to be walking from, you know, from 7-Eleven to any other facility, it's going to be on the south side. So, it seems to make the most sense to me.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members?
As far as Lot 6, I agree, getting a little bit more clarity on that. But to Joyce's point, I was thinking the same thing. There's, someone must have done research. We're at this point where there's got to be more information out there, and we can get clarity on that. I mean, the quick claim, it seems like someone gave up some sort of rights at some point, and there's, there's a gap in there. I think that's where we're looking for that piece. That makes sense. Coordination with city staff and attorney makes sense as well. That seems, it's a big picture, but that seems a little bit simpler with what we're talking about here. Sidewalk, I see, I see benefits of, of getting, you know, extending the north side to, you know, the parking area of Cascade Falls there. I can't argue that the south side is, is a better solution, of course. I'm still circling and interested in if there's a way that, we're, we're calling it a sidewalk, and I guess I'm trying to think outside of the box, a little bit of providing access to that connection at Waterfall Drive, understanding the hurdles and constraints of the brook and getting through and across and along Cascade Road. I know, I know, as soon as, once that turn is made off of Route 1, you know, you know, people accelerate quickly down that road. So, I know it's 40, I know the realistic speed is probably more than that. So, I digress, but getting clarity on that, on that final, that final thought, there's been a couple discussion items. I know, I see the applicants here with, with theirs, and I guess, maybe Jason, you can, this application, the proposal we see before us on the north side and connecting to it, that was prior to, that was prior to the meeting with staff. Is that correct? You had this, you had this proposal, and then you met with staff and had the discussion? Or is that just a result of-
Nope, so actually, the plan that went to MDOT showed it on the south side, but with lane shifts. So, and we, we ended up not submitting that plan because it wasn't what we were moving forward with, because DOT was kind of, we're kind of stuck in the crosshairs here, like a three-man shootout. So DOT doesn't want us to mess with their road, but they don't care where the sidewalk goes, although they, their proposal was the north side. So, you know, we need to get a little bit creative as thinking, how can we maintain, you know, sort of, I guess I'll say, the sanctity of, of DOT's road and, and get you a sidewalk? I have a couple ideas, but I don't want to voice them here, because I don't know how viable they are. But we'll, we'll take that back to the kitchen and cook on a little more, I guess.
So DEP is more supportive of the north side of the road? Okay. And that, I mean, I, I don't think that's, for me, it's not out of the question. I, I agree with access, and it's, it's going to be, the demand is probably going to be, as Jeff stated, towards the convenience store. That seems like a more realistic destination, but I still see the north side as an opportunity, personally, for me. I, I don't think that's out of the question, just myself, but I'd like to see. I, I'm looking at your, what's the date on this? It's ours, it may have been your first concept for Lot A, maybe '07, '10? It's on, it's in our packet, but it shows the sidewalk along the front there, and then it stops at the brook, and I think that's, maybe that was one of the options that you were talking about.
Yeah, I think at some point, we, they were doing the sidewalk to their, to the extent of their frontage, and we even had a little bit of confusion as to, you know, this is getting a project behind us, but if, you know, we were to work in that over Cascade Brook, obviously widen that culvert or something, that your Shoreland Zone ordinance prohibits structure in, right? So, I actually don't think your Shoreland Zone ordinance applies to right-of-ways, so we, we'd have to go back and research a little bit as to, you know, if we put a retaining wall in, came, you know, minimum Espinade, like that's, I don't really want to sit here and talk about that stuff, because it, you know-
Sure.
-might not be viable, so-
Sure.
-we need to go back and, and we'll go back and take another cut at it, work with staff to, to see if we can find a-
And that's where, in my head, I, I kind of think maybe it's, maybe it's not a sidewalk right on Cascade, but maybe, maybe there's an opportunity to do a portion of sidewalk, and then it becomes a meandering trail, and maybe that starts to, maybe we think outside the box a little bit on this one, but I don't know.
The big thing is, you can't, there's nowhere we can go without crossing the brook, right? And so-
Right.
-that's a pretty substantial crossing.
Understood. And then, Jason, while we have you up here, there's a few of the comments from some of the applicant, or the residents here and the neighbors. There's one, traffic, I think we've, we've got that as far as the subdivision. You have the concept here where it was an, or a business-type use and how that affects the traffic, and we have another project that is addressing it separately, but can you mention, again, the traffic as far as this piece of the subdivision with the conceptual plan that you have?
Yeah, so with respect to this application, we provided you a memo from Barton and the Judas discussing anticipated traffic impacts for the uses proposed. The use on Lot B certainly matched as what you have in site plan, and Lot A, we, we picked a use that was actually similar to pack edge. So, you know, more of a warehouse type of thing, which is, which is what we designed, perfectly allowable in the zone. So, you know, we don't, we're not tripping traffic movement permit app, here, yet. And so, when Lot A comes online, if it's within 10 years, it would trip it, so certainly within 10 years, you'd see a traffic movement permit there. And I, if I'm allowed to speak about public comment, I, I would also add, you know, there was a comment in here, sort of confusing occupancy with peak hour traffic, which strongly suggests you don't mix those numbers. Occupancy is a codes thing for, you know, highly-sized things, all that sort-
Correct.
-you know, traffic, people come, three, four people a vehicle. You could have a team show up in a minivan, six people, and traffic is all ruled by the traffic engineers, use a book, I forget the name of it off the top of my head, but the traffic forecasting manual, it's all standardized. So, the, you have a traffic engineer providing traffic counts for these uses on record, and you had a peer review of those services as well, so-
Yes.
-you should be confident in those numbers.
Yeah. And then, there was one about stormwater draining wetlands. Can you touch upon that as far as your, your concept here for proposed Lot A, and how that-
Sure.
-maybe just a brief, a brief summary of that?
Yeah, yeah, so we actually don't show any wetlands impacts on Lot A. Lot B would be where you're getting into impact, so there's no, Lot A, there are no wetland impacts proposed. And actually, as this subdivision application goes, there are no wetland impacts proposed either, right? We're just creating paper lots. The impacts occur on site plan level.
Okay. All right, I think that covers my notes here. Any other thoughts from board members?
So I think the remaining items, I guess, like we spoke about, was the additional clarity on Lot 6 and, and sort of final proposal on sidewalks. I think those are the, I think those are the two outstanding pieces for board members.
Any other thoughts there?
So is that, for the 7th, you think that's-
Yeah.
-something we can-
Yeah, so what we'll do is, we'll just have the applicants send the title binder report to staff, and staff can send that to the town attorney.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
I wish I could get them to design a sidewalk too, but we'll have to figure that out.
That's the fun part, that's what you're for. All right, any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
I would just touch base. I, I agree with you. I mean, ultimately, the best goal would be sidewalks on both sides, and the ordinance is a little hard to make out of, you know, how much linear footage they're supposed to do, but it says that they shall provide them. And given the particular use that's proposed on the lot outside of this applicant's use, I, I would absolutely not be in favor of a payment in lieu of. I mean, that needs to be there for the type of occupancy that they're proposing. It's their burden, they brought it on. So, I mean, if it worked out footage-wise, they would have built one on both sides, I would agree absolutely, having that extra access to Cascade Park. But for this particular, well, the next application, it's absolutely crucial, it's on the south side, going to Waterfall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Do we need a motion to continue review until-
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to continue review of this application to October 7th, 2025.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second.
Second by Joyce, thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Abstain.
A vote yes. Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention to continue to October 7th.
Thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Mr. Chair, can we take a quick break?
Sure, we'll take a five-minute recess at 8:46 PM here so we can continue.
Sure, we'll take a five-minute recess at 8:46 PM here so we can continue.
So, Mr. Chair, before we take up the next item, given the time, I think it'd be appropriate that I would make a motion that we continue past our normal nine o'clock to review Item 7E with a firm stop at 9:45 so that we could take up the remaining correspondence and updates from the planning department at that time.
I'll second.
All right, thank you for the motion, Jeff, and the second, Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion on that motion to continue past 9 to 9:45? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes 7-0 to continue. All right, with that, we will move to our next item, 7E. This is Cascade Road, map 48, Lot 5 and 6. This is a continued public hearing and application review for a proposed athletic dome and associated site improvements. This is under site plan, conditional use, and site location of development and shoreline zoning, all within the Portland Road zoning district and resource protection overlay. Board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item?
Yes. I would like to recuse myself.
Okay. Catherine has requested to recuse herself. We'll note, Lisa's got a note of that. And with that, any, any additional updates beyond our packet here, Shannon?
Thank you. So, there are just two things that I want to reference before we ask the applicant to come up to talk. One of which is we have a after-the-fact packet that has four documents that pertain to the athletic dome in particular. I think we've already referenced it once tonight. And then we did receive, or the applicant did submit as part of their additional materials, a letter from INFW basically reviewing their updated plan sets and how the drive aisles and whatnot were pulled back from the stream and basically saying that it looked appropriate from their review. And that is about it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Board members, any questions for staff at this time? Shannon, can you, can you hit that? Can you explain that again, the wildlife there was?
Yes. So actually, I was just about to look for it. I believe that it is under this resubmission.
And this is the email from August 6th, is that what we're?
Yes.
Okay.
The internet has decided that it would like to be very slow. So hold on one moment.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't anything additional beyond that, but that was the one that we were talking about.
No, that's exactly the one that we were talking about. It's a part of like an email thread where the applicant was going back and forth with an individual from IFNW.
Okay. All right, any additional thoughts for staff at this time from board members? All right, and with that, we have the applicant with us this evening to give us an update if you want to come on up and let us know where we're at.
My name's Joe Foray. I live at 21 Crescentview Avenue in Cape Elizabeth. I'm one of the managing partners of the athletic complex. I wanted to come up and introduce myself. I was raised in Cape Elizabeth and I live there now with my wife and three kids. We, my wife and I started investing in real estate in Biddeford roughly 12 years ago. We owned and operated a lot of apartment buildings. And most recently, we've moved on to commercial properties on Main Street, more historical buildings such as the Pepperell Hall and the Lum Building and the Elements Coffee Building. My nine-to-five job, I own and operate a company with my brother. We do irrigation systems, snow removal. On the soccer front, I grew up playing the game. It had a lot of positive impact on my life. I went on to play at Michigan State on a scholarship. My three kids play it now. We travel all over the place playing, and I've been lucky enough to coach them at the youth level, both at town, club, and then also in high school. Kind of was a dream, a passion project of mine to bring this recreation to Saco. Through all my time traveling to Biddeford, I've always admired your guys' town. And due to the location of it in terms of closeness to Portland and then also south, we felt it'd be the perfect spot for a facility like this. We first submitted, I think, in December, and it's kind of been a long road. I've got to meet you guys, not personally, but listening to you. And I think after that last meeting, we, we took a little pause and, and, you know, I really tried to listen to the things that you guys were saying and try to make some more changes to positively impact in, in the site. We, we decided that if we looked at the entire site plan and shortened the building by about 40 feet and made it 10 feet narrower, we could, and reworked the parking lot, we could bring that entire development outside of that 75-foot stream setback. And it brought our overall buffer for IFNW, the average over 100 feet. We'd been working with IFNW over the past month and took into their, you know, their consideration. And after we've done that, they've come back and supported us and felt that the, you know, the, the buffer was going to minimally impact the stream. With that, with minimizing the building, the height has dropped down two feet, but also by doing that, it's increased the buffer of the Fitton Yaddies property. We've also listened to them and felt that if we could bring that building back 40 feet further down their lot line, it also moves it over about 37 and a half feet from the lot line. It really increases that area. In Silas's resubmission, the, the final page of that kind of gives a good picture of where that actual dome is in relation to the Fitton Yaddies property. In that, he also submitted a progression plan, kind of from where we started to where we are now. And I think it, it shows a pretty good job of, of some concessions that we've made to try to get to where we need to be where Saco would support a project like this. There's been a lot of talk about code and NFPA. And although those are, you know, primarily for building permit, we, we have already started down that road quite a bit. We've worked under the guidance of the state fire marshal, Baumann Fire Specialists, and Paul Designs to, and then also spoke with Saco Code Enforcement that has agreed that this building is constructable. What else we got here? The dome manufacturer and the fabric, they've provided a letter for the concern of PFAS. There was a new message from INGA, concerns about the top coat and the Tedlar. We're not using Tedlar, we're using the acrylic top finish. And we've got a updated letter to include the top coat as well from the Siemens Corporation. I think those are kind of the, the major updates that we have, but I'll let Silas take it on a more professional level.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, this is loading. My name's Silas Canavan, civil engineer for the project with Atlantic Resource Consultants. All right, so obviously, we, you know, we've been in front of you guys numerous times now. I'm not going to rehash everything Joe said, but just basically to summarize, you know, we've, we've taken a really hard look at this site and over time, we've progressed pretty substantially with the, with the design. And we've reduced the scope very substantially from the very beginning. We've removed the field, the outdoor field. We've minimized parking. We've reduced the building size significantly, all in an effort to, you know, appease some of the concerns about environmental impact, impacts to a butters, and everything else that has, has come up. One of the biggest, so if you're looking at this plan right now, one of, one of the biggest changes we've made now based on our IFNW meeting, we had a very productive face-to-face meeting with those guys and talked through a lot of our changes. I know there's a lot going on in this plan, but this is kind of a progression of, of kind of how the development has been pulled back from the brook over time. I also just like to clarify, the IFNW comment, uh, correspondence that we provided was not in the after-the-fact packet. That was actually provided with our, our initial packet. So that was, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that. But basically, this shows, this layout shows the, the current layout that we're now proposing. If you try to just look at this magenta line, that is the 100-foot setback from the brook. If you can follow my, my hand there, and obviously it continues throughout the end of the project. By pulling that back, we, we do obviously still have a little bit of incursion into that, but there's just really no practical alternative to get out of that. You know, by, by not developing this area to the, to the west and pulling it back substantially, IFNW was on board with saying that there would be negligible, negligible impact to the, to the buffer and the, and the brook based on this layout. So we've removed a lot of parking along the front of the building. We've moved it to the, to the west side, as you can see over here. And our average setback now throughout the whole site And our average setback now throughout the whole site is actually over 100 feet. Obviously, a little closer some places, farther away in other places, which gives you that little extra, a little more than 100 feet. So again, as Joe said, we reduced the width of the building by 40 feet and we held the right side of the building, if you will, as we're looking at the plan. We pulled in the left side of the building and that pulls the building substantially farther away from the abutting property. We also reduced it by 10 feet on the front to back. So 10 feet from along the face of the building and we pulled that in, so it was away from the brook farther. And so the concession that Joe and company had to make with that is they can no longer provide an 11-by-11, or 11 versus 11 soccer field. Size reduced to a nine-by-nine, but they're still comfortable that that will work with their business plan. We reduced parking down to 133 spaces. Previously, I think we had about 162 or 160 and change. The VHB during their peer review had stated that 132 parking spaces were required for the dome alone. This is a unique use, so it's not spelled out in the ordinance as exactly how many spaces are required, but with their analysis, we provided, you know, what they said was the minimum, which would be 132, plus one. With this layout, the stormwater management system was also redesigned. Still the same approach. We've got subsurface sand filters and subsurface detention, but we had to shift some things around. But again, we're obviously still meeting all the stormwater standards for the city and the state. We've updated quite a few of our calculations and additional exhibits such as HVAC noise cals. Dome buildings by Farley have been adjusted and provided in the latest plan set. We provided a code review where the local architect provided a letter in our last packet from the city CEO that said this type of building is indeed constructable and it's been constructed multiple locations throughout the state or similar buildings. So we're hoping that that relieves some of your concerns about building code. We've updated the photometric plan, updated the landscape plan. We've also provided, as Joe had mentioned, this vicinity plan here. So we've got Cascade Road on the north side here and Route 1 on the left. This shows the Fatanities Lot right here, this rectangular lot. And we're just kind of showing where the dome falls in relation to that. We've really pulled it back as far as we possibly can from the front of their property. Where, you know, the front of the dome is over 1,000 feet away from the front of their property. The back of the dome is actually beyond the end of their property. We've also pulled it by reducing the length of the building where that actually allowed us to pull it a little bit farther away from the property line as well. So we're doing the best that we can to try to give as much buffering and minimize any impact that they have to their property. The dome also, because we were able to shrink it down a little bit, also got a little bit shorter. So we're about two feet shorter now from the overall height of the dome. So we're, it's about 58 feet now instead of 60 feet high from the floor to top of the dome. And then one other thing too, the, this just so, as we were reviewing, public comment that was provided in the after-the-fact package. We scrambled today to get in touch with the manufacturer of the material that's going to be used for the dome. We did get an updated letter with them that states not only does the fabric not have any PFAS, but also the acrylic coating does not have any PFAS in it either. It's okay, I like to just hand out these letters, so you guys have a copy.
Yeah, as long as we can get one for staff as well.
So actually, I can put that letter up here too for publicists here. Very brief letter, but basically it's just a statement from the manufacturer that says there is no PFAS in either the fabric itself or the acrylic top finish that will be on it as well. So we just wanted to make sure we were, you were aware that we are, we were working hard to try to get all that information that you folks have asked for. So I think with that, we'd like to understand what your latest questions and comments are about the latest design.
All right, great, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant this time?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So you've reduced the building by 40 feet, mostly to take it away from the brook, but are you saying you also moved it further away from the Fatanities property?
Yes, so actually, the 40-foot reduction really didn't have any effect on the buffer, the brook. That was really all in an effort to move it further away from the Fatanities property. So we took that completely from this left side of the building as you're looking at it. The 10-feet-wide strip that we reduced on the front of the building pulled it away from the brook farther. So that, you know, allowed us to, and then also we removed quite a bit of parking that we had along this front section as well and we reworked it on this side of the property.
So what's going to be inside the building now? Just soccer fields?
Same program essentially inside the building, soccer field, but again, like I said, smaller soccer field. It's a nine-by-nine soccer field. Do you know the dimensions off the top of your head?
And pickleball?
Yes, pickleball, yeah, pickleball and soccer. It's the same thing that we proposed before, just the soccer field got smaller. And we reduced some of the aisles in between, you know, between courts, that sort of thing, just to squeeze the building down as much as we possibly could.
And as before, no bleachers? There's not seating for spectators?
No, it'd be standing room, standing room only around the
Sorry, if you could come up to the mic.
Microphone.
Yeah, just so the mic can pick you up. I would appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, the, if you guys look at the Paul Designs that they provided for the NFPA stuff, that gives you a breakdown of what the interior design looks like. And there will be singular benches bolted to the ground in between the pickleball and the soccer field, and then also on the other end of the soccer field. So that will be seating room and then there's standing room spectator along the length of the building. And that's all in that Paul Designs.
Great, thank you. And that's for board members. That's Sheet A004. There's a little bit of color in there. Any other? Camille?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Question for the applicant. So in terms of the outdoor field, are you foregoing that design or is that going to be included later on?
It's not part of the application right now. You know, who knows? We can't, we're not going to say it's never going to be built, but it's certainly not part of the application at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Camille. Any other thoughts from board members? So this is as well a continued public hearing if the board, when the board's ready. Any thoughts or concerns pulling this? I mean, we've got some input from IFNW. They seem to be in support, 102-foot average. And you, Silas, you updated all the lighting, all the stormwater cals, parking cals.
Yes, all the design documents have been updated.
Answer the question on the material. The sidewalk, if we could, that as part of the proposal here, that's to the right and across at the Cascade Brook. Is that?
Yeah, so the sidewalk we have shown on this plan just kind of mimicked what was proposed with the subdivision.
Sure.
So, you know, for the sake of the site plan, whatever sidewalk is approved for the subdivision is obviously going to be constructed as part of this project.
Sure, for continued discussion topic as far as that sidewalk goes and we can work through how we coordinate that, that final design and verbiage as necessary, but, okay. Any other thoughts from board members, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, I've moved to reopen the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion on the motion to reopen the public hearing? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes 6-0 to open the public hearing. If anyone is with us this evening to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record and we will collect comments and address them at the conclusion.
Just going to try to plug in some technology, so just give me a second. Sorry about that. INGA Brown, 161 Simpson Road, resident of Ward 1. Board, I had submitted a letter, obviously in the packet, and one of my questions in the packet of, in my letter, was that I had questions on the coating. And I understand that in the packet this evening, there was a letter from the Siemens Corporation dated July. And so is the letter that was just handed out, is that the same letter from July or is that a new letter? Because it impacts my testimony.
It is, Karen.
It's a newer letter. Would it be possible for me to quickly see that because my testimony? Thank you. Could you stop my time for just a moment so I could look at that?
Yes, yes, continue, yeah.
Okay, so at the July 15th meeting, I believe it was Mr. Abbott from the Farley Corporation who had responded that a letter could be submitted to the record that the coating would not be shedding any microplastics. And so to date, I believe that letter has not been submitted because part of my testimony has been about microplastics. So, if I can do this correctly. Board members, at the end of my comments this evening, I will give you a copy of some testimony that I have prepared and I am going to give you a copy of this diagram of how microplastics actually travel through wind, air, and soil and how they sink. Therefore, my main thrust of my testimony is even though the coating is now an acrylic, this is still a synthetic polymer plastic and we know that acrylics are part of the family of microplastics. How do microplastics affect a project like this? Well, there are over, let me grab my notes here, 14 million metric tons of microplastic in our oceans today. And where do they come from? Well, obviously, they come from chemicals being made by major companies, by 3M or Dacon or DuPont. And a lot of these chemicals end up in our industrial coatings through proprietary means. And it is well-known and documented, and I will provide to you as well this evening another, a very short article about the difference between microplastics pollution and PFAS pollution. Many of these acrylic polymers, these plastics, even if they are not intentionally, and I believe the letter says there are no intentionally added PFAS, these polymers, these fluorides, they break down. And because PFAS are used in the manufacturing process to make these chemicals, PFAS are still present or can still be present. As a fabric, as a coating degrades, those chemicals break down and PFAS can still be present even if they are not intentionally added to the coating. So I just wanted to make that clear. My concern about microplastics with Cascade Brook, the Conservation Commission on its webpage for the city promotes Cascade Brook, and I'm going to grab it here. It's promoted as one of Saco's a critical natural area. And we know that the Cascade Brook is one of the seven main waterways that feeds into the Scarborough Marsh. So I know that my diagram here is probably a little too small for you to see. But if you, when you get my copy, you will see that industrial coatings and turf fields are certainly represented in this diagram. And through abrasion, through wind, through snow, through ice, these acrylic coatings, they break down over time. Now, I understand why these companies use these polymers. They are very durable and they are very stable. But that is exactly the quality that makes them persistent and they are forever pollutants. So one of my questions is, based on the stormwater management plan and the best management practices and the filters and the basins and the purification, are those filtration processes, processes actually going to stop PFAS, potential PFAS from the coating? And undoubtedly, the microplastic pollution that will occur over time, will that stormwater system prohibit that micro pollution, microplastics from entering our water? Our water, our soil, and our air. Microplastics can be airborne through the air and that is why you will find them far away from some of the sites where they are used. This is, to be honest with you, for my concern with the environment and I, as a high school teacher for the last 28 years, my students, I'm not a science teacher, my domain is reading and writing, but my students but my students are very concerned about pollution and microplastics, and they study them in their science classes. These forever pollutants begin somewhere. And here before you, you have a project that is a 66,000, I might have the number wrong, 66,000 square foot acrylic plastic sheet, and it will have environmental consequences on our Saco environment. I am 100% convinced of that. I will provide you with more documentation for that. This project is an anomaly. It is unique, it is rare. And as a high school teacher, I want to just say I commend other speakers this evening who are going to talk about the physical health and the social emotional benefits that come from sports. I witness that every day as a teacher, and I do not want to minimize that in any way. But at what cost, at what cost do we want to potentially approve a project that has detrimental, long-term, long-lasting, forever microplastics associated with this technology that is still emerging? And it pains me to say this, but I know from my research, companies like DuPont, companies like Decon, they have lost the trust of the American people. There are so many lawsuits against these companies. They continue to make new PFAS, new chemical compositions, and the EPA and local government cannot keep up with these new chemicals. They know what they're doing. In the 1960s and the 1970s, 3M already knew that these PFAS chemicals would forever bind to the protein in our blood, and their own scientists covered it up. So I do not have much faith in, I know DuPont is a wonderful company in many ways with their own scientists, but I am very, very concerned about the long-term environmental impacts of this project. Lastly, I am concerned about the, there's no formal communication in this packet from the, our fire chief in communication with the state fire marshal. This board approved two 30-foot yurts a couple of years ago, and the fire marshal weighed in in the packet, these must be sprinkled, and he gave his reason why. I find the packet very incomplete, and I have very significant concerns about those codes. Is that's really my time? I feel like I've been talking a long time. Matt, is that really accurate? Is that, I still have time?
No, that's going past.
I asked how much I went past?
That's how much it went past, yeah.
Okay.
It's okay.
Yeah, well, no, thank you, I appreciate the diligence of the time. What I would like to do, if it's okay, I would like to just approach the DAS and give you my testimony. There's a little bit that's out of date now because of the updated letter that was received this evening.
Yeah, as long as we get, staff gets a copy as well. Great, thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, and you did receive the two letters that I sent earlier today and was in the after-the-fact packet. Thank you. I will just want to reiterate a couple of them during my public comment here before you. The city of Saco is getting much better as far as right title and interest and making sure it is valid when they come before you. It is my opinion that no applicant, if they are out of contract, should be before you without providing such contract, executed contract. In my research over the last several months of this being before you, I saw the May 12th, 2025 amended contract submission. There were six amendments prior to that. You should be able to see that, to see what's going on. In my letter, you did see that they went from at least 90,000 square feet in a contract with the seller to then amended it to 77,000 square feet at least, and mentioned the two fields and then the one field and the parking spaces and everything. This one had, their due diligence was to, excuse me, let me just be accurate here. The terms included a commitment date, title review period, and again, I'm going to repeat, title review period. I heard earlier tonight testimony saying it was over a year ago they did the title review. However, during this seventh submission, or sixth, or whatever, they're saying that they had a title review period, and they also had a due diligence period to June 17th, 2025, two and a half months ago, a couple of months ago, let's say, with the closing date extended to August 1st, 2025. Do you have a legal contract before you tonight in order to hear this application and this continued public hearing? They could have it, it could be an oversight, but it again, it is the applicant's burden to stay in contract with a purchase and sale or a contract of sale and submit it to the staff, which will then send it to you. We are now at, in my calculations, under the 9-2 packet, we're at 65,750 square feet. That would include the dome and the accessory building. Is that contract valid? That's, they signed at least 77,000 square feet. Now, yes, they can go back and get another contract, but they've been out of contract if they have not paid the escrow amount of $5,000 prior to, and a written letter, and we have the buyer agent here, was the written letter provided before August 1st per real estate contract law? And was the extension made in a new contract and a new amendment been done? These are all questions, if I was on the planning board, I would want to make sure I have all the legalities checked, 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 before I start to continue to hear an application. And if it was an oversight, or I will put it bluntly, not paying attention, lazy to a contract. I personally do not want someone who will not stay in contract and provide it to staff, provide it to you. What's going to happen down the line on all the contingencies or conditions or anything that you or and/or staff or peer reviews or the directors of each department? Where's my faith and trust in that? If you can't even remain in contract and get that to you. The other part is on the other email, pardon me. Are you going to be requesting another, because it's a new site plan, are you requesting another sidewalk? Would that be appropriate? Would you be, where is the NERPA resubmission? They did submit new plans, they've already done a resubmission once before that I'm aware of. Where is it now for this one? Is that going to now be current? The, there's no storage, still, even if you go 40 feet. I'm now reading, and again, I might not understand it clearly. But if they do not want sprinklers, even though that their original project narrative in 2024 in their first original packet in February, it says that they are going to be sprinkled, this building, that's in the letter. Just go back to the project narrative, it's on that first page. And where's the conversation with sprinklers? Either with yourselves or with the code enforcement office or with the fire department? And why going to the state when the stricter of, stricter of languages will prevail? And our language that we worked on in ZORs with sprinklers was five, six, four, five, six years ago. Sprinklers over 40 feet, period. This is over 40 feet. Where's the conversation with sprinklers? And if they want to change the floor, I forgot the word, pardon me, but stay with me, it's about the flooring. If they, if, possibly you know, read the letter again, but by changing the flooring, they don't have to do the sprinklers, they don't want to do the sprinklers. But if you do it according to the flooring, then what will happen is there's another rule out there that's now you've got to be 60 feet all the way around the perimeter and be able to see up to the sky. Well, they backed it up 40 feet, but if they're not going to put sprinklers, we're going to go back another 60 feet. Now we're on the buyer's property. So this building envelope, the mass scale bulk of this building to an irregular, complicated parcel of land with a lot of unknowns legally, you can't build on what you don't have a right to. Has to be vetted, we need an assessor, we need the legal team like you had been discussing on the other application. But my biggest concern is if they don't want sprinklers and they're saying, trying to say, we'll do this with the floor and not, and I'm, here's the ordinance, yeah, it's there, the rule's there, but then you trickle the layers down. And you cannot, cannot dismiss, if you do this, there's going to be other layers that you've got to look at, and there could be some over here. How do they all marry up, and then how can you make an informed decision for an approval? Or approval with conditions? When it is sprinkled, it needs to be sprinkled, that's what Saco says. Yes, it's a unique piece of property. But we did not go through ZORs and, Mr. Chair, for full disclosure to the people in the back and Mr. Broshu, we were on the ZORs Planning Board, Planning Board merge when those discussions were talked about sprinklers. So I personally want to hear more about what are they going to do with sprinklers when they at the inception of wanting to even come to Saco? They need the code, they know it pretty well, I've been watching every video. Why did they say they want sprinklers, and then where are they? Where is code weighing in? Have you got a memo from them? Have you got a memo from Deputy Chief Pendleton, who I did talk to? And he told me what happened in different meetings prior to him becoming harbor master and left. And then, Mr. Deputy Chief Dulos? Why is everyone saying I'll defer it to the state? Our code says sprinklers. That needs to be vetted out. And then, as far as the land, I am so uncomfortable with all the easements and the right-of-way, and if you go to the main state highway maps that they did in 1959, 1957, they said that they didn't have any documentations on one of the plans. However, I found them. I found, I've found different things that on the plan, it says, unknown, don't know it. As far as a property card, on Lot 6, it says 048006000000 with all the information that's on there, and it's one acre and whatnot. Why isn't that in front of you, and why is everything just talking about Lot 5 when the application, when the, all the supporting documents say 5 and 6? And to have the little bit that I agree with you, it was talked about. I saw that video. But where were the qualifying questions to that? That lot was owned by the city of Saco. There are means and bounds that are out there. I don't know how to put degrees and whatnot that's in the language, actual legal language of a deed. I don't know how to do that. But it's there, and somebody can put that on there, on that lot. Then the question remains, because I know City of Saco owned it. Well, that's a layer that nobody was expecting, that this lot was owned by the city of Saco and they used it, and it was a landlocked lot. There's way too much to this, and I want to thank you very much, there's a lot more. I will settle with the two letters, there's codes in there, code references in there that if I was on the planning board, yes, I understand, Mr. Molyo, your comment as far as whatever's practicable? That's in the code, to the extent practicable, I believe is the quote. The dome is unique, and with all these different variables, all these unknowns on a smaller footprint with the dome of its size, with the shadowing, if you've got to go 60 feet, if they want to not have sprinklers, then maybe the shadow won't make a difference. But there's just too many layers that you truly do need to vet. And to say that, to the extent practicable, at what level does the city of Saco want to say what's practicable on a unique project like this? It has to be based on the code, and I do not think it will, it will fail on design guidelines, in my opinion, it will fail on a couple of the mentions on site plan and conditional use, in my opinion. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Hello, Brandon Mitchell, 6 Rocky Hill Road, Cape Elizabeth. I am the buyer's broker. We are still under contract on this. We've been under contracts for over a year, within that contract, we've had several contingencies, one of them titled, it's been vetted out. But also, we had several extensions built into that contract with some financial consequences, and Joe here has paid for those extensions, so we are fully extended out to November, and working on some more if needed.
Thank you.
You don't mind if I speak?
Yes, if we, yeah, if new topics, I know we, yes.
Okay.
Please be brief, yes. But, please, go ahead.
Maybe I should hand some things out, a copy of what I'm going to go over.
Could you, could you please name and address for the record?
Frederick Tannies Jr., I live at 911 Portland Road.
Thank you.
This is something that my sister.
Is there a copy for staff and the applicant as well?
In the applicant's latest submission, there's, they hope to take advantage of something in the main uniform building code which allows unlimited floor area, and in certain cases, they don't need a sprinkler system. And they cite an exception, which, and they quoted, it says the automatic sprink, number two, the automatic sprinkler system should not be required in areas occupied for indoor participant sports such as tennis, skating, swimming, and equestrian activities in occupancy group A4, provided that the following- skating, swimming, and equestrian activities in occupancy Group A4, provided that the following criteria are met." And it talks about exit doors, and a fire alarm system, and this is about automatic sprinkler system providing storage rooms, press boxes, concession booths, and so forth. They want to take advantage of that. But the problem is, they just, they took it out of context. You have to look at the whole section, and up at the top, it talks about 507.4 sprinkled one-story buildings. That's the top of the section where it begins. And it says, "The area of a Group A4 building, not more than one story above grade plane of other than type V construction, or the area of a Group B, F, M, or S building, no more than one story above grade plane of any construction type, shall not be limited where the building is provided with an automatic sprinkler system throughout in accordance with Section 903.3.1.1, and is surrounded by, surrounded and is joined by public ways or yards not less than sixty feet in width." So in order to qualify for this section, unlimited area, you have to provide something, and that is a yard not less than sixty feet in width. It's like a fire lane all around the building. That is not part of the plan. They just took the exception out, hoping to benefit from the exception, without providing the sixty-foot yard. So if they have to put the yard, then either the building has to be smaller, or something that will have to change in the plan. Because there isn't room for that. They've moved away from the brook. They want to take advantage of this to avoid having to put a sprinkler system in. Well, if they want to avoid a sprinkler system, they have to be able to have a yard around the building. I still think the sprinkler system applies for other reasons. The fire code, and Saco fire code, and the main state fire code are still there, even if they could use this. But the thing is, if they want to use this, they've got to have the sixty-foot yard around I guess that's all for right now. You can have that to, you can look at that. And there's a link up here, internet link, webpage, so you can look at the codes yourself there up at the top. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Andrea Fatanides, 911 Portland Road in Saco, and I'm representing a Byers', Fred and Marjorie Fatanides. And I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the yard, the sixty-foot yard that's required. It's supposed to be clear from the ground to the sky. There's supposed to be nothing there. I don't think they would be able to have the building in the front. I think that would have to be a clear yard. The trees would also have to come down, and probably there would be, on our property line, it would have to be at least sixty feet plus, there would still have to be a buffer. So that would make it quite a bit smaller. But as my brother was saying, we think that the fire codes would still apply anyway, and that they would not be able to get away without a sprinkler system. I spoke by email with someone in the state fire marshal's office, and he told me that all the enforcement is done locally. They don't have any say. That's what he told me. And I would like to see some of these conversations, or some kind of, something in writing that should go in the packet. They keep referring to the state fire marshal's office, and we haven't seen anything about Now, I have another, my question, it wasn't answered before, about the wetlands. But they're putting a building, they're proposing to put a building in the wetlands, and they're paving over the wetlands. The city engineer said that if you're going to put a building over the wetlands, the wetlands will have to be drained. I don't know how that works. I don't know if it's going to cause water. It seems to me, when you're, if you're going to, they're probably going to have to fill in the wetlands, there's going to be water that's going to build up on our property, and eventually, it's probably going to spill back onto their property. We have a lot of water that comes from the condominiums they filled in. It comes through our property, and it drains onto this other parcel. And I don't want to be in between two places where we're getting water from both sides. That's all I have for now, except, well, the design standards in Article 5. This has been going on, and they probably knew from the start that they didn't comply with those, but they keep saying it's a unique structure. Well, any structure can be called unique if it's not complying with the design standards. So I don't know if those are just going to be thrown out the window. And one thing that's been bothering me, the applicant had said that the noise ordinance does not apply to him because athletic events are exempt from the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance exempts special community events, like a parade or a football game, but noises from the regular operation of a business and building do not fit into this category of exemptions. It seems that they keep finding all these things that do not apply to them. It's one thing after another, and it's kind of frustrating. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, we've gone well past our time here. Shannon, Lisa, do we have time on our October 7th agenda to, or? If the board finds to continue this application, is there, when's our next opportunity? Is there opportunity on the 16th, 17th? 16th?
So, listening to Lisa with the training, it might be tight to have it on the 16th. So the first meeting in October might be best.
The 7th?
Yes.
So, board members, we still have the public hearing open. That being said, I would like to address a few of the items here, but perhaps we continue the hearing first, and then we can turn it back to the board briefly, and have a brief discussion, and provide the applicant the necessary comments and discussion items or direction to continue to the 17, or the 7th, if that works with board members?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we continue the public hearing until October 7th.
I have a second. All right, thank you for the motion. Any additional discussion to continue the public hearing to October 7th? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes 6-0. So back to the board, a few of the comments here. One, briefly, the board doesn't dictate code. That's why we have the code enforcement office. They will work with the fire marshal. They implement and enforce the codes that we have. Their codes are complicated, but that's not for the board. If the building meets the requirements of the sprinkling, it will be sprinkled. It's, we don't, we, beyond what our ordinance says, we don't go through and decide what projects have sprinklers and will not, shall not. It's code, that's why we have them. The applicant's representative made a comment that we, that they are under contract through November. Let's make sure, we have a lot of documents here, but let's ensure if staff has a copy of that. We spoke about Lot 6. That in conjunction with the subdivision property, that question will hopefully be answered and clarified. We have a discussion on PFAS and microplastics. I think there's a little bit of discussion, there's probably more discussion to have there, I suspect. And then with that, maybe Silas, we can talk about how the stormwater management system, how that comes into play with something like that, with the microplastics. Also, the comment about draining wetlands, I think, for me, that might be a little bit of misunderstanding about how the soils are drained, and how underdrains work with the system, but I, you know, listen to you on that, would like to hear your comments on Board members, any other thoughts or feedback we can give the applicant to continue discussion come our next meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Jim?
Well, I'm interested in that sprinkler versus no sprinkler scenario, and the sixty feet around the building, if it's not sprinkled. I, you know, I haven't studied those codes, but if we're going to have any code people from the city commenting, I think that would be useful for us to understand.
Okay. Shannon, we did have, was it Mr. Fisk? Did he, did I see his name on a comment on that? Was it on this item for us? I'm just looking at it real quick. He didn't, he didn't specifically address sprinkler. Very generic. If you, if you could mention, if you could speak with him as to the discussion we're having with the board, I don't think it's fair to ask the applicant for a whole code review from the code officer, because he doesn't have an official building permit application from him, so that's, he's provided this, we have code review from the applicant's licensed architect, so I personally feel it's a push to kind of go this far. If the architects, the engineers, the code officers, if they find that in our ordinance and in the main uniform building code, and that a sprinkler system isn't required for this, and it meets the requirements of our ordinance, and it does, that's their job, in my opinion. But if you could update him at least to the discussions and sort of the questions and the comments that were, that the board's wrestling through. Jeff?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's very, very trying, right? There's a typical sequence of operation that they go through with their designs, and the design gets stamped by the state fire marshal's office, and then it's, you know, reinforced locally, installation and maintenance-wise. But the applicant, you know, the citizens have brought up a good point. We have an underlying city ordinance, right? And part of our thing is that we're saying that this project complies with all local, state, and federal ordinances and laws. I think we need pretty clear deputy fire chief, or fire chief to say, "Yes, it's going to be required because our local ordinance says it's there." Or if they're going to use an exemption that requires a sixty-foot buffer, we need to know that, because that plays into footprint layout of the building, and setbacks, and additional buffering. We can, I know there's frustration, you know, they've been working very hard at this, they've done a lot of great work, they've, you know, met with a lot of changes, right, to comply with all this stuff. But we're kind of left hanging here, and I agree with you, it's not typically our code, but public safety is part of our review. And this is a unique building in that regard. I think it'd be great if we could have the two people that have to make that call. The code enforcement officer is the liaison that determines how that applies. Let's have them in the room. Let's have him, the fire chief, in the room, and get a firm decision so that we can move past this piece, because there's a lot of other criteria that we're very good at, and I feel like we haven't got to it yet, you know? Just Chapter 5, our design criteria. There's a lot of things there that I think are a bit of a stretch for me. And are we just wasting applicant's time trying to figure out what's going on with sprinklers? So either we keep doing this and have the same results with another continuation, or do we get everyone in the room? I mean, we know that we're going to request the same legal review of Lot 6, so we get that one out of the way. I just, I feel for the applicant, I feel for us, we're all spending a lot of time with this. And I'd like to, or do we just say, "Let's forget about sprinklers for this point," and start our review checklist, and find out how the board feels on design criteria and stormwater management, and start voting to see if we can make forward progress? That's just kind of, I guess, a little bit of my frustration and stall, that we need to move forward, let the applicant know if this building is unique in their eyes and we view the same way, or not. You know, we had an application for similar use within the last year for Thornton Academy. If we waive all this stuff, don't you think they would go, "Geez, wish we would have known we could get away without any design characteristics, without any sprinkler system, without any of this stuff?" I mean, they're all very admirable purposes, and there's great value in athletics, and getting kids involved in activity for young and for old. There's a lot of positives here. For the same token, we have a set of ordinances we need to contain and check boxes. And I feel like we've got some things that are very easily in our domain, that we may or may not agree on, that would affect approval of this. We can keep kicking the sprinkler one down the road, or we can get everyone in the room, figure out where we stand, and then start a check, a review, but we need to set some time to do that, because I think it's going to be a fairly long process to do one item at a time. But I think it's important, so the applicant knows where we stand, and we make a decision on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, I agree, at our next meeting, I would like to go through the list as a board and discuss, and that is top priority on the list. I don't think we need to talk about the sprinkler anymore. It's, the code says one thing, our ordinance says another. If the ordinance says we do it, we do it. I, I don't believe it requires, I read the code, the building code and fire code, that it doesn't need it. So if the ordinance, if it meets the requirements of the ordinance, that's different. So it's, staff is going to, staff is going to confirm. Any other thoughts from board members? Concerns? We'll have a coordinated effort on the sidewalk, response on the sidewalk, and then we'll, the intent is to go through and have our deliberation, and go through our list and our items for October 7th. As a board, do we want, do you want to go through? Do board members feel comfortable? We'll go through that list, and we'll work through findings, and we'll build that, that evening with staff? I guess I would, in lieu of our typical scenario of staff giving us drafts, or would you like to see that draft document from staff to go through at the same time?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think, I mean, there may be some issues that are just, you know, the answers are... the answer's obvious, and so we don't need to be struggling and voting on each one. If the staff can knock out 10 of them, then great. I'd be in favor of the staff at least making an effort to see what's non-controversial about the application for findings of fact, rather than have us, I mean, because we will spend all night going through each one of those, of those topics.
Yeah, so Jim, I would support that for efficiencies, for staff to build that list like we typically do in review. Other board members have thoughts on that? Jeff?
I would like the staff to compile the format, maybe they don't have to put their summary findings in, but it'll give us a benchmark, and we'll do our little straw poles and work through, that tends to work very well with this group. But if they can at least give us the format, and even if it's, they don't know, just put down each requirement in order that we normally do them from our standards, I think would be very helpful, and then we'll, we'll tackle it that evening.
I agree. So we'll, so Shannon, if we could have a very rough draft of that findings, and that way we can build the findings of fact. So then with that, we can build conditions as well, and we can start to look at that and review that for that evening of October 7th as well. Okay, great. Silas, any questions from you at this time? Any piece that you feel you need more input from us on, or?
No, I, I think, I think we're good for now. You know, we weren't able to get into any real detailed questions, design questions today, so I guess my only request would be if, you know, maybe we could be earlier on the agenda, you know, it seems we're always kind of stuck at the end of the agenda, and we're running out of time just about every single time.
Yes.
And it would be helpful if we had a little more time to discuss it.
I appreciate that, and we are, we will adjust the agenda to ensure that we have time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you need a motion to continue this matter generally till October 7th?
Thank you for the motion, Jim?
I will second.
Seconded by Jeff, thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, motion passes 6-0, to continue to October 7th. All right, thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you October 7th. So, with that, as far as our general correspondences this evening, our planning department updates, planning board comments, Shannon, is there anything on these items that require immediate attention, or can we table those items to the 16th?
I think these items could be tabled to the 16th.
If the board, of course, supports tabling, whatever, whatever you have on the list there. And I, I think that's just our SOP?
Yes, we didn't formally accept the new lines for the SOP, so we might want to move that to, to the 16th.
Sure, so, board members, if you, unless you'd like to take it up this evening and continue, it's 10:13 here. Thoughts from board members, I know we said 9:45 here. Any thoughts, opinions?
Let's continue review to a later date, to the 16th.
16th sounds great.
All over the 16th.
So, motion made and seconded to continue our remaining items to the 16th. Those in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, so unanimous, 7-0 to table the remaining items to the 16th. So, with that, thank you, everyone, for continuing with us this evening, and we will adjourn at 10:14 PM. Thank you.